Welcome everybody to City Council Second, uh, City Council's we have a day. Uh, which will be before the start and city council is just something I was like, I think it was just, uh, just getting ready.
So unfortunately, Councilmember Penrose is not able to attend an emergency tonight due to a temporary cause of physical disability that they took back. Councilmember Penrose has notified us that she will be attending for voting for just cause due to this issue. City Attorney Catherine Inver has confirmed that Councilmember Penrose may do so under the just cause provisions of the Brown Act, AB 2441, and provided a formal report to the board of attendants in person and the board attends via audio and visual and video technology. In addition, Councilmember may only use just cause provisions two times per year. Given that there are four councilmembers here in person tonight and that this is only the first time in 2025 that Councilmember Penrose has attended for voting for just cause, Councilmember Penrose may attend remotely. Councilmember Penrose has required by the Brown Act, could you please let us know if there is anyone 18 years of age or older who would be looking in? And if so, your relationship to them? There is no other number of voting. And can you see the council chambers and clear everything up until now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, please separate voting.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Diana.
Here.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
Mayor Constable.
Here.
Thank you. Um, please all rise for the President.
Someone.
Uh, hold on.
Hi.
Bye.
So, uh, first time is, uh, to represent this population, this is a presentation and this is a presentation, uh, as we have been, uh, that's how, uh, we.
Mr. Mayor, this, uh, obviously was a hot discussion the last meeting when we were talking about the gay gay project and we have a group of community representatives that are working on a lot of issues over the years to people are downtown and tonight's day, the prayer day, we should talk about the work this afternoon and we're happy to talk to you.
Thank you so much, Chris Toen, how do you look at here? And.
Let's see, don't forget from Italian and Chinese.
And that's it, it's representing the downtown resolution. Thank you so much. It is time to present, um, the work that we have included in the last four, five months. Um, we want to say thank you to Councilmember Patrick who brought us all together. So how this group came to be and who we represent? Um, so, so who we represent is the four main organizations that do work of any kind on Main Street of separate, um, individual events. So we've got our wonderful Happy Day Beautiful Vacation Committee who is represented by Cameron Palmer, the co-site chamber Palmer is represented by myself, Chris Lin, the Downtown Association, which is represented by Colleen and, um, Betsy, and the city, which is represented by Councilmember Patrick Lo Johnson. Our mission is to bring together these organizations in a way that they have not been brought together in quite a long time, if ever. We all have played a different part on helping Main Street be an economic place for both residents and tourists, but we've always stayed in our separate side of those. And thanks to the help of, um, Councilmember Patrick, we were able to come together and turn that into one giant side of it. Currently, there are eight areas that we have been focusing our work. So the first and foremost is a light ordinance. And this is, uh, working, all of these projects are working with the city, um, and we are here to help with the pieces that the city could use some advice on or some help with the manpower so that staff does not have to spend time that they can use better elsewhere. So we've got a light ordinance, street sweeping, sidewalk cleaning, compact parking stalls for some parts of Main Street, wave binding signage, street pole banners, map kiosks, and the street trees and flowers. Together, we think all of these projects will make downtown vibrant as it works towards the Streetscape Master Plan. Here is just a small snapshot of what we have been working on in each of these eight categories. I do want to recognize that this is only a small sliver of the doodles and doodles of papers that we've got back at home base. Um, so thanks to the city, there is a draft light ordinance that is being worked on right now and we look forward to that coming forward to council so that the city can look at properties like the old roadside publisher's building and the 7-Eleven dumpster area that seem to be prone to lots of garbage collection or just really bad wear and tear due to neglected buildings, um, and help to clean those up. Currently downtown is starting to suffer from what is called broken window syndrome, which is where once a window is broken, then more windows become broken because it slowly becomes more and more and more. It was a study, I believe, in 1954 about this. So we are trying to help avoid the, the broken window skinning wall lights, but. The next is the street sweeping. So we're not exactly sure what the difference is over the last couple of years, but the leaves and the debris on the streets has gotten way out of hand, um, and unfortunately makes the street look quite dismal, um, as it is hating. We have been working with the city to identify the problem, um, and some of that relates to cars being parked on the sides of the road, whether the street sweepers come by, where the street sweepers are going, and so on. So we have been working with city staff to identify those issues and then we are hopeful that an ordinance will come forward, uh, to, uh, do what other cities have been known to do, which is put signs up that street sweeping is happening at a certain time and that cars can't be parked there, just to ensure that the street sweepers get to them. Along with the street sweeping, also the sidewalks have been suffering. Uh, we have been working with the city to identify what some of the major issues are. Uh, the biggest one being recruiting trees. We have not identified what a solution may look like because people love the trees and obviously chopping them all down is not going to be a way forward, but unfortunately they like the mess and absolutely tend to look like a film hall street, which is not what we are trying to look like to our tourists and residents. Um, so we are working with the city to, um, identify possible solutions and possible solutions like eco-friendly, uh, power washing. So we do understand that you can't just get out there with a regular pressure washer. There are California and Sydney ordinance is that, um, need to be adhered to. Um, so we are very grateful to Maz for helping us with the route that and once we know what the cost is, we will do some fundraising to see how we can stack that up. And then a fun idea is that, um, once we start getting these things handled, we are going to be asking the individual shop owners to, um, maintain the front of their shops and we are going to create an award that we hope to give out at future city council meetings, um, for shops that are looking or restaurants or businesses that are looking particularly awesome and we can celebrate how we do it. Next up is the compact parking stalls. So one thing that came up quite often during the Streetscape Master Plan, um, is that the parking on Main Street is a typical number and when it gets brought up to make it federal, um, people get very upset. So, um, one thing that came up this year in the city's priority session meeting was the idea of some of the tighter Main Street blocks, to mark them as compact so that at least certain areas are safer for people to go through, um, to hopefully stop, um, as many plunder betters as we see people pulling out and trying to get them on a ranch truck that is, um, slipping out very far. So we are, uh, working with the city to create, um, to research and create an ordinance for turning those into compact stalls and then we don't lose any parking, we just shift it. Uh, and then working with the city on some parking signs to let people know about the parking on other parts of the streets. And the next step that came up at our last meeting was the wave binding signage. Um, and so we have been, uh, working, uh, together to create some ideas that we can then bring to the city and to the different groups, um, out of both cultural and advisory committee, planning committee, and the community to start the, um, conversation on what do people want to see from the signs, both in design and style. Um, after much research and discussion, the brand for downtown men for signage not only will make it easier for future signage to be made without having to start from scratch, but it also will make it easier for people to identify wave binding signage versus parking signage and so on, uh, based on their design. And it will all be inclusive and there's two record designers on the pitch, so Lord knows who wanted to do that. Um, through the summer, uh, multiple committee members went to other towns, um, just and spoke out their signage and something we found interesting was that, um, monument signage that had really organic feel tended to stand out the absolute most. And then quite a few cities have this newer to us style of signage that you see in the second picture of highlighting the businesses that are located on a block versus dust, um, mat. Uh, so all of these ideas are being investigated and, um, we have also this, um, inspiration and beginning pieces of that that we will be bringing forward. And Chad today, he's been really awesome with helping figure out permits or getting us ready to help me with that. Uh, next, um, the project that we have been spending the most amount of time on is the street pole banners, uh, because that was a project that due to its smaller scope and whole hole, smaller budget, um, would be easy to get off the ground and implement but create a nice visual, visual start to the implementation of Main Street signage. Um, so, uh, unfortunately, well, hopefully people will be kind of see there's lots of checkmarks there, uh, and thank you to city staff for everything that they have done to help, um, figure out the types of things that we need and, um, we're really excited about the reactivation of pole, reactivation of the big platform poles at the end of Main Street. So hopefully in the near future, beautiful banners on Main Street, um, up and down on the light poles. And then the last piece of the wave binding is the map kiosks. So it's important to help our visitors especially, bring it themselves to downtown, especially this downtown is eventually going to start sprawling past Main Street in a larger, in a larger length. So Magdutra Park has been identified as a wonderful place to put a map and thank you to Maz, he was able to show me some ideal spots that we performed really well and thank you to Marion Stark who ran up and down the street with me one day, um, standing in corners pretending to be a map so that we can visualize what that would be like. Um, and one thing that we are really trying to take into account is the Streetscape Master Plan, so, um, all the things that we have been researching should fall in line with that very well and we will, we're really hard to streamline hardware so that it is easy to source, hopefully doesn't need too much customization and all matches and is easy to replace or match as new things become available. And last but not certainly not least is the street trees and flowers. So over time and with different shops having different wants for the fronts of their stores, um, the pots in front of different areas and on the corners, uh, have become quite an array of foliage, some is green, um, is brown, and some is not necessarily related to our area if the doors does hold our weather. Um, so we want to thank Janice Moody who has helped start this process in doing some free, uh, plantings in part of areas with very beautiful succulents. Uh, we look forward to working with city staff to help, um, create some kind of a policy and look and feel, uh, for the plants that go on Main Street and be unified and beautiful get a lot of the shops to have their individuality. And also big thank you to the Happy Day Beautiful Vacation Committee who do the pots that came from the holes. Um, due to funding being what it is, they have started getting sponsors for those. So thank you to all those sponsors who support individual potted flowers, uh, but they maintain those and they have been doing a wonderful job. And that concludes the presentation review, very much.
Great work.
And also, uh, hopefully I can just thank you for listening and urge you to read through the sign points of Chris Lin's presentation, she put hours and hours and hours after many talks and meetings on our own. Just like a light ordinance can stop the broken syndrome, syndrome, uh, conflict, well, humiliation can be spread like a flower and more and more people are going to think this is, um, still be the current companies of them.
We, we can stop and wrap up soon. Yeah.
Thank you guys, it's been fun working with you guys and Betsy, all the details that we talked over, Chris Lin, over the years and years, we've got great ideas and staff for this nation, we're already seeing things happening, staff's already got the, um, athlete going out and to the right with the, the bus sign in, the Lucido sidewalks are cleaned and there's, we have access to ADA exclusive cabin, high level dirt in the back in these roads. And so we have the Rite Aid building now that the trash has been loaded with all the non-happy cleaned up, trying to get the, uh, you know, the, the domain enclosed, maybe locate that somewhere else in the maintenance facility so that when the heat carrying building is not stuck all over the place. So all the things that we've been talking about, staff, that's another side and we're getting ideas and when heat comes in, so this is a positive segment of handling, I mean, we'll be able to.
And I just want to say that it's not just about tier finds or creating mortality when we do those things that shows that we care and I think people want to feel the care we form and these sorts of projects help make everybody feel.
Thank you. Um, for the last, I have a question for, uh, five minutes here. Uh, for those who are here for public forum and you want to comment, these go out in cars, which you can find over there and that's a car and a bus there. Uh, public forum is, um, you can talk about anything you want, it's not kind of a chain of ice, but there are a number of items on the agenda, items that are on the agenda without, um, a studio, it's a comment, we're going to come up to those things. But anything else in the world that you want to talk about, you can bring up in public forum, just ask that you, uh, are first, uh, pass it over and, um, sign up by the forum and just all, uh, people are here and something, you know, like, uh, and, um, again, sorry for the late today, we have some technical difficulties and, um, it's pretty complex. So let's move on to item number four, the, uh, which is mayor's announcement, he has many activities and new service. Don't forget this Thursday afternoon, that's right, uh, we have every activity there, I think there's a blast one, there's a convention this time. Music for all kinds of great stuff, so, um, this kind of sounds, sounds so pretty good, okay. Um, that's all I got, um, very quick report out, I'm just close session.
Okay, the council, uh, was speaking to discuss, uh, so I understand this public equation's violation of the city manager and the city attorney, um, we're now still sort of the process and that we should.
And we can, um, uh, next item is our city, city manager, city manager, uh, we have two reports tonight. Uh, the first one I'd like to welcome out Mary Guerta, who is the executive assistant in the city manager's office, who will be introduced to me at recent internship. We have a, uh, membership this afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, uh, Mary, my name is Mary Guerta and I am the executive assistant of the city manager. And for the purpose of this update, I have had the opportunity to supervise Lara Kishal. She is our, uh, city manager's office intern. Lara joined us on June 26th for two months. She is a Catholic native and she currently attends UCLA. She is pursuing studies in chemical engineering with plans to continue on to a law degree. During her internship, Lara contributed to several projects in the city manager's office and we have already appreciated her energy and dedication. At this time, I would like to invite Lara, please join us virtually so she can share a few words about her experience in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Hi, Neil, you're free, Mr. Check? Yes. Okay, perfect. Hi, yeah, just like Mary mentioned, I'm a Florida patient, I'm a junior at UCLA, I currently here training with some of the new parties here, um, which are resident assistants. But yeah, I wanted to share a bit about my experience as a resident with the city office day and with the office. I had such a great experience, uh, coming into it, I had a lot of modeling experience. I used to go to the department itself in my government relationships department, so I had logged into council members before I was a state, you know, the state level, like the national level, but I never knew what happened behind the scenes of the city. And I also worked for companies and private universities, but what I can do is just so different to come into the city's office and seeing how many new parts there are that leads the city around. Um, really being able to sit down and talk to the different staff members and see all the new experiences toward what city clerk does, what city manager does, and to do projects for the city attorney, um, which was such a amazing experience and I will go into a little few. Uh, many others were a research project for Catherine, it was above the gate of government control and, you know, finding past examples where it's happened, allowed by the Capitol industrial and through that, I remember something much about how things, decisions affect cities like ours and numerous cities and all the new research and resources that need to go into looking at that. I also worked with Maggie and city clerks, uh, to, to help standard to start the records, especially people with reservations and all of this, which is really interesting to see, um, what was the rate of the time or work with, um, that includes all the graphical engine system and, you know, tracking our street pole banners, which was just mentioned in the past, officially, um, to see how we can improve our own, uh, making of the city and looking at others, how they, um, did application to progress for that, so that other organizations could also utilize those. Uh, but the way the project, the summer, I think, simply because of the problem of children and social media rapport. My key team, taking on the city membership, were being part of the government, I got the chance to go out on the home night out with Matthew to talk to, um, citizens at home day and really see how the Capitol getting to talk to the social media department, uh, here, their employees in the city, how it's used to be and also really understand how this should rise. Uh, another key takeaway, our, uh, project, the challenge of the city, especially with all the new parts, like working with the Capitol, especially how the city looks like. Also now we have to adapt as we go and this experience is really, we're motivated, motivated to go further, um, which we really want to realize, so we're going back to working in the city because I really enjoyed this experience. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, uh, first of all, great things, uh, Steve, uh, your work is an intern, it's a lot of C P that you asked and, um, I'm very glad that you, uh, took the time to talk about your, your experience and, uh, that you, uh, enjoyed the internship and that's very incredible, that's why I feel I so, uh, effectively appreciate my own work.
Thank you so, so much. Generally, this opportunity has changed, uh, how I look at my career and how I approach other ones, so really thank you all so much for this.
Um, this is another person.
Uh, we have one brief update, uh, Moss.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I was a councilwoman, have a really brief update and I just wanted to, uh, to, yeah, I haven't seen already, councilor was, uh, probably certified to complete the construction of the staircase at Surfer's Beach. Uh, the container was done about a couple weeks ago and they opened it up, people have been using it, so I just wanted to provide that quick update. The, uh, Surfer, the Surfer Beach, uh, standard management project, Harvard District is a lot going and I believe they have another one of that project going on, uh, on the positive note, uh, access has been restored and I'm pretty sure we see a lot of folks utilized it, um, we will be seeing a, uh, city, uh, park sign going up soon, so, um, just wanted to provide that quick update. Any questions?
No, thank you, great, thanks so much. Well, I think we're, um, so before we start, so before we start, uh, I'm going to, uh, since that's just, uh.
There are people online who said we had two members of the community that would like to make a comment, uh, we do have one or two.
One, three, one minute.
Yes. So, um, doesn't a council member have to be visible? She is invisible, I mean, anyone who's on Zoom, so just use her as a tag. She is invisible too.
Okay, I think, um, we'll start with this three people plus.
It's two people plus.
So, um, we will start, we have three people on, uh, the, uh, Councilmember Penrose, are you ready?
Oh, yeah.
Great, so I'm going to start with you. Great, so I'm going to start with you. Three minute timer on the way. It works, by the way, if you're familiar, there's a three minute timer. And there's two tones. So here, one tone after two and a half minutes, the thirty seconds left. And then a final tone, which means, you know, five seconds. So it's probably, I'm starting with.
Thank you. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Patman Bay. I'm speaking out as an elective official, and it's an angry and frightened human being. Donald Trump, that dumb tech, is going to destroy everything that we hold dear in these United States. He has already shown unequivocally that he has no respect for the rule of law. That he is willing to jail the folks that you vote into office. That he will never allow questions to be asked from public officials that may have the potential to question this agenda. And what will the consequences of your disobedience statement? He will federalize the National Guard, deserting the power of your elected government. He will call in the armed forces. He is saying, be quiet, shut up. Or if you defy me, I will master from you, punch you down and make you pay. I know that my voice and some of the words that I'm using tonight may seem extreme. But we do not have the luxury of mincing our words and pushing them around. This is no longer a contest between Democrats and Republicans. It is not a struggle between progressives and conservatives. What we have now is a battle between what is lawful and what is criminal. Between what is sane and what is crazy. Between what is good and what is evil. When democracy dies, be careful which side you're on. If it's the wrong side, you and your children and your parents and your neighbors will lose your power. Lose your right to choose. Lose your right to speak out and be in dire peril of losing your freedom and your life. If you are an elected official, speak up now. This is the time to protest. It is critical that every elected official who swore to uphold the constitution of the United States and in California show that they are willing to defend that. If you live in the United States, please speak up. All of our voices need to be heard. Please protest against what you feel is wrong or dangerous. Do not allow evil to triumph because you were afraid to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, um, about the laws. So one of the best practices I've been counseling, I've been counseling is to actually ask people we have to, was after speaking, you might ask why? The reason is, I think we're in some areas sometimes, Republicans, and come up to the podium. And, you know, by not employing people in the city, you don't have to let somebody to come up. And you don't have to worry about you're presenting a view that's not on the day. So that's why I ask people to, you need to respect that and, you know, to learn about it. Okay, um, can you, um, listen?
Yes, next, Sid Young. Thank you. I hope you can hear me. I would just like to feedback momentarily on what councilmember Penrose had to say. And that is that the chief of our nation has complicit backers in Congress. And they control the purse strings in most every other government. But they're allowing him free rein to do things like pull out the Kennedy Rose Garden, build the ballrooms, have great big parades in Washington, military parades in Washington, and deploy the ICE troops in our cities. So, you know, it's really important to vote. Anybody that sat out the last election now sees that they probably should have gone to the ballot. But anyway, what I really wanted to talk about was our ongoing issue that I brought up at the last meeting when I attended in person, and that's the explosions, the very loud explosions up and down the coast. Hopefully this time, Navy's Captain Chechov is there, but I can't really tell. But some of the questions that I have from him is, why are the calls about loud explosions? Or, if you will, illegal fireworks? Not showing up on the coast side dispatch logs for the sheriff's department? Also, did possibly Sheriff Corpus order the coast side deputies to stand down or not respond? Or are the deputies deciding on their own to not go investigate that with booming complaints? And my third question is, can the department deploy gunshot detectors like they have in East Palo Alto? Or the ALPRs, automatic license plate readers try to catch these scofflaws? It went on this for the end as well. And I saw quite a bit of chatter on Zoom about it. I mean, sorry, next door about it. But I, some people even mentioned that the dispatchers had answered the phone when they called. Were surprised. They said, nobody ever calls about this, but that just isn't true. So I don't know if he's there to answer that question, but that seems to be my question. And certainly would be great if they could catch these people. Because they're scaring pets, they're scaring older people like myself. And they're certainly frightening people with PTSD like our veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I have good news, Captain Chechov, this is today. And I know this is an issue for a few people, so a few other people who are willing to, so. Would it make sense to let the other speakers go first? I mean, my business is all the questions. You know, anyone can do that too. It's a lot of questions. So, um, bring up those other years. Well, I should finish.
Hi, great. David Lukowski?
Good evening. Actually, I'm Joanne Lukowski, but it's a shared computer. And I'm speaking on another topic, but I also want to acknowledge councilmember Penrose's comments just earlier. I fully agree. We all need to be willing to speak out and we need to do somehow. As Timothy Snegger, a scholar on authoritarianism says, we must speak out, we must protest while we still can. And I believe that, and I believe it's time for all of us. I also believe that one of our duties is to protect those among us who are most vulnerable. And in that vein, I bring you the topic that I wanted to speak to for just another moment tonight. And that is that last week, I had the privilege to attend in the exhibit, the fire community. Several city representatives were attendees as well. And we saw the studio portraits of farm workers who are photographed holding the products of their own labor, such as beautiful vegetables and flowers. This is a celebration of farm workers and what they have contributed to the entire coast side community. So tonight, I am urging the city of Patman Bay to further acknowledge and celebrate the work of farm workers in our community by moving forward without delay towards completing, beginning and completing the farm worker housing at 555 Kelly. I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more folks?
I have no other answers.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I will move on to the folks who are in the room. If you can come forward and go in and make their voices heard. So on this similar topic of fireworks and explosions, I invite Allison, how's it?
How's it? Yeah, thank you. That's my favorite, that's my work. And, you know, I'm a councilwoman. I am in town, I'm a neighbor in town, so there are multiple families. The disruption of sleep in the middle of the night, which is at 10:00 PM for a lot of our children and for a lot of your parents and probably the experience of also. But when you're asleep, your child's asleep, your animals in the house, the peace that you need at night is so finally, sometimes, because if you are close to these, they will round your windows. Windows open, you can go to sleep. Physically, I'm that sweet, which happens to me multiple times on my entire life apart. So I have been going from Ocean Colony and from Miami to Tampa to Moscow. This is a behavior that affects the health of a wide variety of your community that you should hear about. There's really no excuse not to address this head on. And hopefully we'll get some answers on your next speaker. I am sorry that it is scumptious, but it is a sad, sad state that people just don't care about other people's well-being, their health, the side they have. So let's all, please, say hello to your neighbor. Talk to your neighbor over the fence. It might just be his next door neighbor who's a single father. He's working two jobs. He's got three kids he's trying to raise. He doesn't know where his twelve year old kid is at 10 o'clock at night. He may be at work, he may have no child here at night. So there are people that aren't supporting their neighbors. There are people that are not supporting their community members. I didn't live in this town during COVID. I was very fortunate to be in an environment up in the skyline where I did not have to have the influx of my community on top of me or one on top of me. All of our neighborhood were all very friendly, all still walk. He didn't walk together. But what I felt in this town is I don't have that attitude. And I've been here in Patman Bay for decades. I am from the peninsula. And I have never felt so sad about two communities that, three communities, I don't know how many communities are here that just are not connected. And apparently, it's wonderful and fabulous and crazy and the best ever. But there needs to be a neighbor to neighbor to neighbor to neighbor connection, please. So we all just have so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Allison. Our next speaker is Tim Kristof.
Can you hear me? This is Eric, councilmember. I'm just here to talk about the position. I don't do a lot of things. It is, it is kind of getting out of control. There's, I mean, I can hear it in my house. I know people that live over there. They can see the smoke from the children's, we know that, we know that. We don't know where they're coming from. I did have the opportunity to talk to, uh, that on the show. Before I went there, he actually has some brilliant ideas.
Hopefully, he's going to be discussing them in the near future here. But I just thought it was important that if it's not agendized, that maybe we get it on the agenda. So it's something we can talk about further. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now I would like to re-invite Captain Chechov to the podium. And I, yeah, I think we've heard all our speakers who are here talking about that topic.
He's just talking about the explosion people.
Oh, on those particular code enforcements, got it. Jimmy, sorry, sorry, Captain. Yeah, I didn't realize that, Ken.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Benjamin. I know you can hear me. It's 100 Pillars Cidos Avenue. I'm honored to introduce my wife, Zoya. She never comes to city council meetings. People don't think I'm married. But we've been married for 35 years. And this is how she asked me to spend our 35th anniversary, which is today. Because.
Jimmy, can you speak a little closer to the mic?
Seriously?
There you go, yes.
Okay, now I hope you can hear me. So we have been, like so many other members of the community, racked by the noise of the fireworks before. But especially since the Fourth of July, almost every night, multiple fireworks. I am particularly disturbed that on one occasion, when my wife called the police department, it seemed that they hadn't gotten that many complaints. In fact, they seemed surprised. Another of my neighbors called and they, I was grateful that a deputy did go to a location where apparently the caller thought that they had located the fireworks. But the deputy's response was, well, I'll just ask them to tone it down. Now, I don't need to explain to you that your municipal code, section 914 and 923, explicitly make this a violation of the law. So I'm not asking for a policy change or to think about something. I'm asking you to ask our deputy to enforce our municipal code because this is a big deal. I live next to Sam. I'm used to a certain level of noise. I hear trucks coming in at four o'clock in the morning. They shouldn't, but they do. During the construction process, while they're raising the electrical systems, I hear the jackhammers all day. They're great neighbors, I put up with that. But this lawlessness is just absurd and it's dangerous. It creates a threat of fire risk from those things. If people don't respond, it creates a threat of vigilante responses. And that's the part that bothers me the most. The idea of escalating violence within a community that has no reason for which there is no excuse for this provocation. So I'm asking from the bottom of my heart that you help us resolve this problem as a sign of what we can do to resolve our differences as we move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else here put in a card on explosives? I don't think so, but I want to be sure this time. Great, Captain Chechov, welcome.
Good evening, you'll forgive me, I didn't prepare anything. As per se, I wasn't sure exactly what to expect. But, so a few of the, to address the first points that were made, I missed part of the first question. So I apologize for that. But I caught something to the effect of calls weren't showing up on something. If it is looking at the transparency portal, it's because that only reports cases when they're taken. Generally, a case is not taken unless something has been identified, somebody's been arrested or something to that effect. Most time fireworks cases are not drawn. It's tracked in our CAD system, which goes to the next point, which is, in terms of people reporting. So in, forgive me if I don't turn around to everybody who cared enough to show up. Thank you very much for showing up. Please call. The, I hate to bring this up, but does everybody remember Kitty Genovese in New York? I may be dating myself in this, but it was a woman who was attacked. They contacted, I think, 30 people who saw it and nobody called. Everybody thinks somebody else is going to call. Please call. And I'll tell you why in just a second. Because it allows us not only to address the problem, but to look for patterns and to identify the root of the problem. So even if, you know, you don't think it's worth calling 911, absolutely. You can always call 726-8287. call 726-8286. That goes straight through to dispatch. All those calls are logged. If you have an idea, which I'll just bring up right now, please, we're actively looking for solutions, very open to hearing any input, any ideas. You can call, the main business line is 726-8288. If I'm not there, they can take a message. If the office isn't open, you can leave a voicemail. But saying that, when I pull up the numbers, between July 4th to now, we'd only received 40 fireworks complaints in Hafn Bay. Now, that isn't to say that there could have been some that were miscoded, but that tells me there's probably a lot of people who don't want to be a problem. I don't want to be the thorn. Please be the thorn. I'm asking you, please be the thorn. Now, moving on, sorry, about the Shot Spotter, this has come up. The only city in the county that has a Shot Spotter is East Palo Alto. They've had good success for it, with it. However, it does require installed infrastructure and it does take years to, to, to fine tune. From speaking to East Palo Alto, they've had it since 2012 and only in the last few years has it been accurate. I remember in the early days, because we used to share a radio channel with East Palo Alto, every time there was construction, every time there was a car backfiring, every time there was any number of things, it would go off and it took years to develop that. I mean, that's something, I could absolutely get that information and forward it to you, how much the cost is, how much the run-up time was, not a problem, but it's not going to fix the immediate problem. We have been doing targeted patrols. Unfortunately, as some have observed, the problem is unless you're within about a block, most of the time when people are setting off fireworks, they're not standing around to see who shows up, which makes it very difficult. One of the ideas that's come up and people heading, I don't know, south in Alsace, and then the deputies can go and intercept them. As opposed to now, by the time a deputy gets to the sound of an explosion, the people are probably long gone. Now, that being said, and the reason I want to float that is because I understand a lot of people have very reasonable concerns about drones, the use of drone technology, especially in non-taxable situations and in something like this. So I would very much like to hear input from the people, as I'm sure everybody else would. This is really a discussion. A lot of people wouldn't feel comfortable with that and I understand it, but it's probably an idea to be thrown out there. I've already talked with our drone unit and we could probably do a pilot at minimal, if any, cost to see how it works out if this is something the public is comfortable with. So unfortunately, this year, we weren't able to do a buyback. We weren't authorized for it. However, given the turnout tonight, I could present this to our executive team and see if we can get the funding for a fireworks buyback. The last time we did one was year before last and I think that we bought back over 50 pounds of explosives. So that may make a difference. I will seek those funds and see what we can do there. If you don't mind, I'd like to talk to you about your experience after this. And there's always the option also of looking at some of the municipal codes and expanding them. The county currently has a county ordinance, which can hold the homeowner accountable for people setting off fireworks from their house. It also can hold parents accountable for their children, depending on the situation. That's very much a political decision, but it is one that could possibly benefit. I understand what people are saying and like I said, please, we want your ideas, we want your suggestion, we need your eyes and ears telling us where to look. When I pulled up this data and I got, got those 40 calls, I found that about 65% of those took place between Friday and Saturday nights between nine and midnight. That's a pretty narrow window, so we can look for things. In addition to that, what I found is also Friday tended to be more downtown. Saturday tended to be west of Highway 1. Again, this is narrowing areas that we can look and try and catch people and get those fireworks off the street and get people a decent night's sleep. I think that's, did I, any other questions that I missed?
I mean, I, I think we've heard some concerns about the response when deputies do get the calls and making sure that they're actively enforcing and not just trying to keep the peace, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, and I do intend to follow up on that because that's something that I thought was absolutely clear and I want to make sure that there's no mistaking it, that while at the same time, we are human and we recognize that there may be times when leniency is in order, those times should be articulable based on the circumstances then and should be defensible and it should not be the default. It shouldn't be an excuse to be lazy.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, our annual report from the sheriff's office will be coming up, I think, next month, is that right? And so we could take the opportunity to bring additional data forward and some, you know, some of the data that he's gone through and show some of the graphics. Obviously, tonight was more responding to the community, but we could be a little more engaged in this conversation at that meeting if, if you'd like, and I'll, I'll check in with you over the next couple of weeks.
One last question, under our municipal codes that were brought up, is there a financial penalty associated?
Yes, $1,000.
$1,000 fine?
Yes.
Great, because that might be a great response, $1,000 fine, people, somehow I'm sure that'll show up in people's own social contact media that, wow, so-and-so got $1,000 ticket and that could do, just a couple of those could go a long way. It's preventative, so thank you. Thank you, Cam, for coming up and giving us your good ideas and for encouraging people to, yeah, please report these and, because it looks like there are some patterns here that we can focus in on. Anything else?
Captain Chichov, I want, I appreciate you coming down. I know you got grilled just now because you didn't know this was coming up, but I want to thank Zoya for calling me or texting me over the weekend and Sid Young and the people that came here prior to this that brought it forward. And so what's happening here is our community is joining together and Zoya is reaching out, Sid's, they met at one point, now they're talking and it's going on next door. We got Jimmy involved now, we got Captain Chichov here who's involved. I think we can get this, I'll put out $300 reward if we can find that person that's doing or kids doing it, whatever we got to do. And what, one of the, one of the ladies that came up here, reach out to your neighbors, get to know your neighbors, because that's how we're going to find this person. Now, you're also telling me, and I agree with you, where you're saying there's, they're going off, because they are going off in our location and then they, and then you hear it downtown, so you're narrowing it down. So if we work together, I think we can do this and I appreciate the input that we're getting. This is the beginning of trying to solve this and I think we're going to be able to do this.
No, I agree, and that's one of the beautiful things about Hafn Bay. It's, you know, it's big enough to have everything you need and small enough where people can still talk.
Yep, I appreciate everybody coming down and talking and this is what we need right now, get it going.
My pleasure.
But, but when we say Hafn Bay, are we talking the coast side or just Hafn Bay?
Right now, I'm just talking about Hafn Bay specifically.
Right.
Coastwide, we, coastwide, coastside, we had about 68 complaints, so the lion's share really was in Hafn Bay. There was a spattering across El Granada. Strangely, I shouldn't say strangely because the, just the landscape in El Granada is going to make it echoey and difficult to tell where. They're very spread out, same thing on mid-coast, but Hafn Bay actually does have very visible hotspots.
All right, thank you. And I didn't know, you're the sheriff, do you coordinate with yourself for the coast side and Hafn Bay?
Yes, I, I try and talk to myself as much as possible.
All right, all right, thank you.
Any more from, okay, thanks again, really appreciate you coming over tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor Brownstone, we do have one more online speaker. I don't know if you want to take them now or later, just wanted to...
Sure, since I can't see him.
Yeah, okay, Emily Bolts.
Yes, hi, I just, just for clarification, when we did make the call, we were trying to explain that it wasn't fireworks we were hearing. This boom, and I'm in Kenyatta Cove, and quite a few of us hear it as well. And it is so loud that it's, I'm concerned as to who is, you know, it's not just fireworks, it's actually like a bomb sound going off, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Emily, thank you. Okay, our next speaker, we're going to invite Crystalin from Coastside Chamber back up again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Crystalin, Coastside Chamber, here to share some fun news. Last year, the city helped fund the coast side's first comprehensive visitor study and this past weekend, the boots-on-the-beach portion of our visitor study finished and we just had some really cool stats. I was talking with Matthew before the weekend and we just thought you would find this really fun and get you jazzed up for the stats that will be coming. So, super cool is that, guess how many surveys we got? It's on the screen, but 1,345 individuals filled out our survey. We had 342 surveys from Poplar Beach, 276 surveys from Kelly State Beach, Downtown had 214, the Harbor 262, and Fitzgerald Marine Reserve 251. These surveys were conducted by seven lovely locals, Loreen, Scott, Rosalinda, Brittany, Catherine, Emma, and Alicia. Together, they did 35 four-hour shifts, which was a grand total of 140 hours over the course of six weekends, talking to our visitors and getting their information. We were able, through the support that you provided, we were able to pay them just over $3,500 for their efforts and so we were able to circulate that money back into the community, which was pretty cool. Some noticeable trends that we have already seen pop up is that a lot of our anecdotal evidence is now being realized in real data. Day trippers are dominant. The data showed that a vast majority of visitors are considered day trippers, so they are here for roughly three to five hours. 80% of our respondents are here for a day trip. The top three areas were primarily Bay Area, however, the fourth was out of state, which was a nice surprise. We did find that people going to the beaches in the Marine Reserve were more likely to just stay on the beach or in the reserve. However, the respondents in Downtown and at the Harbor had a high percentage rate of being overnight stays and saying that they were exploring other regions of our area. So these are just little tidbits and we will have a full study at the end of the year, but another fun tidbit that will be coming is spending data. January to June 2025, Visa credit cards have been $57.5 million in local spending, with 28.9 of that million dollars coming from San Francisco, Oakland, Berkeley area. So stats like these are going to help us market to the right people and make sure that the visitors we have are the visitors that we want staying here overnight in the middle of the week, not creating more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Look forward to hearing more survey results later. Our next speaker is Harvey Rhabat.
I want to start by thanking Councilman Penrose and advocating exactly for what she said. If you don't speak up when the situation is dire, you're complicit in what's going to happen, so that's just where I'm coming from. But on a much happier note, if you haven't seen 880 Stone Pine, I encourage you to go and see what a community that cares about farmworkers can do. It's a wonderful looking place. It's very upbeat, it's waiting for people to actually move in. There were a few cars I saw for people who were beginning to get there. It's amazing how quickly you can build something if you really care about getting it done. And the wonderful thing about that project is that there's going to be equity involved for the farmworkers who do move in and after 10 years, they'll have a real stake in, in their community and that's encouraging people to be proud of what they're doing. So that, that's an example of how quickly you can do things and that brings me back to what Joanne Rakowski said. I don't know what the holdup is on Cinco, Cinco, Cinco Kelly, but it's very clear to me that something has to be done and I urge the council to do whatever they can to expedite that we can get this retired farmworker or senior farmworker housing built, because that's another expression of the community involvement in caring for our farmworker heritage. The last point I want to make is that the biggest audience I've ever seen at the council meeting was when we were discussing the possibility during Trump's first term of declaring Hafn Bay a sanctuary city. I understand that if we do that, it's more symbolic than anything, but symbols are important and if we want to tell our immigrant community that we care about them and we want to protect them, I would urge the council to consider declaring Hafn Bay a sanctuary city that welcomes immigrants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harry. Our next speaker is Joaquin Jimenez.
city staff, members of the public. Housing, you know, our community is still struggling with housing. Repeating what Joanne mentioned and Harvey about you need to take a visit, you need to visit Stone Pine, Stone Pine Cove. I spoke with some of the residents at the, at the site and they're very happy. You know, that's something that we have been needing, you know, if you know about the arena cycle, we need to have, we need to build 480 units in, in six years. Are we going to be able to do it? We also have a 555 Kelly. There's still some questions about 555 Kelly. You know, and who is that going to be built for? Are they going to be paying rent? What is the benefit to the city? Parking. Any place where you build anything new, you always have a problem with parking, no matter what it is. It's also going to be parking, there's always going to be a problem with parking. Hafn Bay or Heritage Hafn Bay or Farming Heritage Hafn Bay is struggling. Some of our local farmers, they have to approve visas from people from other countries to come to work at the farms. The farming industry in Hafn Bay is a million-dollar industry and it's been affected with what's going on. Housing is one of the issues. Housing affects our farming. Yesterday, a ship they call from one of my students, her father was a farmworker here in Hafn Bay, worked in the nurseries for many, many years. They had to move out to Oregon because they could not afford the rents. He passed. And one of his last requests before he passed was, you know, take me back to Hafn Bay. Now, we used to have a lot of farmworkers. We have an aging group of farmworkers in their 70s, still harvesting. Go check out the field. Right now, the Brussels sprouts. Go visit the fields, see who's harvesting your Brussels sprouts. We have people in their 70s still working and we should talking about parking on the 555 Kelly. That's not right. Or community, or farmworkers, the community generally needs housing and we have to provide that. We're talking about making Hafn Bay beautiful, how about the people that are struggling? Are we going to forget about them? It doesn't work like that. Let's not, let's not forget about the people that have put, put on the table for many, many years, decades, that have been ignored. We need housing. We need housing.
Thank you, Joaquin. Anyone else online?
No online speakers.
Okay, our final speaker is, um, Anita Reese from the Pacific Resource Center.
Hello, um, Anita Reese. I am here to talk about our Unhoused on the Coast Outreach Work, which is a program of the Pacifica Resource Center. It's funded primarily by the County of San Mateo Center on Homelessness. We provide outreach and engagement and case management services to unhoused folks on the San Mateo County coast from Pacifica through Pascadero with the goal of helping them return to housing. Outreach staff is available seven days a week, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, 9 to 5:00. And will respond to requests for service generally within three hours during those out, during those times. If you see someone living outside or in a vehicle, please call us. Our number 650-452-6279, or you can email ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org anytime of the day. As of today, I wanted to share that there are seven encampments, um, with 17 people in them and 33 additional unhoused folks in Half Moon Bay specifically. Of the seven encampments, three are active with, uh, current living situations in one of those encampments. So that's generally how we consider active versus inactive. Um, we are still paying attention to the other four encampments in case people come back. Um, and I just wanted to mention that the three active encampments are actually part of a county's encampment resolution funding project, which runs through June of 2027. Um, we were nearly a year into that project and have been able to help two folks return to housing and 19 enter into shelter. This is between December 2024 and July of 2025. And I just want to thank city staff and the council for partnering with the county and PRC as, with PRC as the service provider, um, to help unhoused folks in Half Moon Bay return to housing. And also trying some new interventions, including incentives for folks in motorhomes to abandon instead of sell their vehicles to other folks who might then be living in them, um, which we hope to try soon. And I do plan to attend city council meetings at least once a month. So if there's anything specific you want to learn or hear from, I'm happy to share specific information. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Did council have any questions before you? Okay. And thank you for the great work that you're doing and tracking, uh, progress. Appreciate that. That ends officially our public forum. Public forum is now closed. We'll now move on to our consent item. Um, there's only a few items. Anyone have anything to pull? There's just three items. Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 8A, which is way of reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item, um, 8B, approved minutes of August 19th, 2025, special meeting. And 8C, uh, approved minutes of August 19th, 2025, regular meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, I have a quick question for, um, the city attorney. When councilmembers participating remotely, are we required to have roll call votes as opposed to?
Yes, we are. Thank you. Um, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, well, let's redo that one. So let's have a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, and I'd like to apologize to the rest of council for making you all do this by roll call votes.
No problem.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
And Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's see, we have no ordinances in public hearings this evening, no resolutions in staff reports. So we'll move on to item 10A, Planning Commission Appointment. Do we need a staff report? I think so.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to just give a brief staff report. Um, so, um, as many people know, uh, one of the important ways that the city functions is, uh, through our planning commission. They work with our community development staff in the community on reviewing and evaluating, uh, development proposals and, um, changes within our city. And those are volunteers from our community, and they're appointed by our city council. It's, it's a tough job. I know, uh, Councilmember Nagangast spent some time on our planning commission in the past. Uh, not Nagangast, Johnson. I was looking right at you. Um, and, uh, it's, it's a very important role in our community. And from time to time, normally appointments take place after an election. Um, each council member has the opportunity to recommend an appointment that then has to be, um, voted on by the rest of the council members. On occasion, we have a vacancy due to a change, and in this case, we have, uh, a planning commissioner that recently resigned. And, um, so we opened up the opportunity for folks to apply for this opportunity. Um, and we actually was on our last agenda. Uh, but the, the mayor, whose appointment this is, um, asked for a little more time, and we got a few more, um, applications, and there's been time to consider it. And tonight, Mr. Mayor will make, uh, a recommendation for who he would like to appoint to the planning commission, and then the council will vote to confirm that or make a change. So, thank you.
Great. Um, well, you know, my, um, when I thought about the criteria who I was looking for, um, what really mattered to me most was bringing on someone actually who's had planning commission experience or something really similar. And, um, in fact, I even went back to a couple of folks, um, who had direct experience, who didn't even apply, but just to see if they might be interested. Because I felt like that was, uh, probably one of the most important factors. And then how, um, if there was such an individual, how they looked at issues. Were they willing to have balance around, um? You know, we live in a community like that weighs keeping the community character intact very heavily. Um, we also are in a community where some people have different opinions. Some want a lot more development, some want no development. And sometimes trying to balance those interests, um, is a difficult responsibility for, um, planning commissioners. And also looking for someone who could be, um, innovative in building consensus. You know, sometimes coming up with that third solution that can bring people together. Because sometimes we have to handle disputes within a community, right? Um, in terms of people wanting to build something, neighbors wanting it, not wanting it. So really having that disposition to listen and hear and be able to balance different interests. So luckily, a, there was a candidate who applied, who, um, on paper, um, met that, that criteria. Exactly. And then I, um, spoke with them for a while, and I think the person is, uh, in the room, uh, Christopher here? Yeah, there you are. Thank you, Christopher. Thanks for coming tonight. Um, let me tell you a little bit about Christopher James Delnagro. Christopher, uh, moved here a few years ago from, uh, Millbury. In Millbury, he, uh, was, was a planning commissioner, uh, for a few years, uh, pretty recently, uh, before moving here. And before serving on the planning commission, he was a park and recreation commissioner for the city of Millbury. Two times he was the chair. He actually did that for eight years. He was on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for four years. So definitely the profile of someone not just interested in being, uh, having, um, serving the public interest, but not just an interest, but actually doing it. In addition, I'm sure to their, his full-time job. His full-time, um, job is, um, well, actually, I'll let him tell. Well, he's, he's a PhD in, uh, molecular biology and immunology. And, um, that's part of his full-time job, which I'm sure keeps him very busy. So, um, we spoke, and, um, I felt that, yeah, he was, uh, had a very even disposition in terms of looking at issues. I asked him if he had some familiarity with some number of the key issues going on in Half Moon Bay. He was very familiar with them. And of course, decided to do a little background check because we know people in Millbury. And, um, Vice Mayor also knew folks in Millbury, and we sought some, um, information about how he was perceived there. And we got some terrific references, and I'll quote one of them from a former mayor and, uh, council member in Millbury whose opinion I know I personally valued highly, as well as the Vice Mayor. She said, "I highly recommend Chris. He's smart and very reasonable. He listens well, and he makes informed decisions. No hidden agendas. He just really cares about the community." And she said, "I really miss him. I wish he was still in Millbury." So we're lucky enough to, um, have him here in Half Moon Bay. So that is the individual who I'm putting forth this evening. Comments?
Um, there were some good applications, but I, but I think you made a good nomination, a sound nomination. Very experienced, and of course, with great references. So happy to support you.
Sorry. Christopher was, uh, when it first came up, I was, I read your everything, and I was like, wow, this guy's done this. And all the credentials that you have with all the other park and rec and the bike, and it's going to be a good overlap with everything. But there's a lot of coastal things you're going to have to learn here that's going to make it a little tricky. And the Measure D is going to be a little tricky. Um, and so there are things you're going to have to learn quick on that stuff. I mean, Jimmy Benjamin was just here. He's the expert on that. Tim Pond is somewhere in here. He's sitting over there. He's really good at that stuff, on the Measure D stuff. So, I mean, I, I think you're going to be a good fit, but there's a lot of things you're going to have to learn from the community also, um, to get up and running. So it's a lot to learn, but I think you're ready for it.
And I, I've met you a few, a few times walking the streets, and I'm glad you're willing to participate and want to. And I, I want to make sure, I think it's fantastic. We do get a pool to choose from. You know, we're fortunate to have, uh, a lot of interested and passionate people that do want to contribute. So, um, I, I, I support your, um, who you wanted to appoint.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes, I don't know Chris at all, but, um, I would back, uh, the mayor in his choice tonight.
Okay. So I, uh, move that we appoint.
I just want to check to see if there's any public comments on this item.
Public comment?
We have no paper comments and no one online either.
Thank you for checking that. Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we, um, appoint Christopher James Delnagro as our new, uh, planning commissioner. Can I have a roll call?
Can I have a second? Is there a second first?
A second.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oops. Congratulations, Christopher. Yeah, I'm, I'm, great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the public here in Half Moon Bay. Um, I originally came here with family, uh, my wife here, Deanna, two of our kids. We do have five children, two that are in the, uh, school district locally at the high school. Um, very grateful, um, for what I've learned from the community. I absolutely understand how much I have to learn. Some ways I don't know how much I need to learn. I'm sure a lot of the public that I'll talk to will actually help me, uh, get through some of the very specific elements to Half Moon Bay, and of course, the County Coastal Commission as well. Um, please reach out to me if you want to talk and get to know me a little bit better. Also, bin my ear a little bit. I'm here to listen.
Thank you, Christopher.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also just acknowledge what a great pool of candidates we had. Um, I think that's a really good sign that the community is engaged and, and wants to participate. So one of the things I want to do is work with our team to find other ways to take advantage of the great talent we have in our community and the desire to support the work that we do. So hopefully, those that applied but weren't selected this time around will continue to be interested and, and work with us on, in other ways to, to serve the city.
Thank you, Matthew. Our next item on our agenda is item 10B, regarding the Opportunity Center of the Coast Side. And I think we're going to, um, have a update um, on the Opportunity Center from Karen Decker. Thanks, Karen.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Community. I'm Karen Decker, Economic and Community Vitality Manager. I'm here to provide a status update on the Opportunity Center. I realize the hour is not early, and there are several items after mine. So I'm actually going to make an attempt to consolidate some of my comments. But I also want to do the item justice, and there's more detail in the staff report. Um, so the Opportunity Center is a first-of-its-kind service center for job seekers and for small businesses and for entrepreneurs. Um, for those of you who may not have had a chance to stop by, it's located in the 600 block of Main Street across from Bank of America. And tonight, I'm so pleased to be joined by leadership from all the Opportunity Center providers that operate at that site. In addition to leadership, I recognize several direct service staff as well as some clients. So thank you so much for spending your time and contributing to this conversation. Um, we're going to focus on some of the key successes, given that an evaluation was just released last month. The evaluation, which you'll refer me, you'll hear me refer to throughout the presentation, uh, was a collaboration between the City of South San Francisco, San Mateo County, and the City of, of Half Moon Bay, because all three of us have economic centers within our jurisdictions. And these are new economic advancement centers. And so we were aware that we didn't know what we didn't know. And so funding and evaluation seemed to be a good idea in order to gauge processes and progress, gauge the effectiveness of the services, and also have data to look at ongoing sustainable funding opportunities. Um, that evaluation was conducted by a third party called Head and Heart Advisory, and it was funded through a generous grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. Okay. Um, so just doing some quick stage setting, why ramp up these services? What's the long game? Uh, we know we have to make choices about where to invest our resources, and economic advancement strategies that are part of the Opportunity Center pay multiple dividends, which you see on this slide. Um, I won't go through the bullets. I think you can read faster than I can talk. I will say they're self-explanatory, um, but community protective factors, the second to the last one. Uh, let me just provide some quick context to what that refers to. That means when residents are participating in the labor market, there's reduced financial stress, there's enhanced social cohesion, there's civic participation, there's community stabilization. And these investments contribute ultimately to the city, the city's bottom line. And these investments contribute ultimately to the city, the city's bottom line. When you ask voters what's important to them, they say the economy. Opportunity Center services are about activation and creating local jobs and supporting small business and looking at our local assets like ag tech. Jobs generate taxes, taxes mean improved services to the community, a reduction in public benefits, and research shows that these interventions spur benefits. Some progress to date, so a lot has been done in a relatively short period of time. The duration for the evaluation was 15 months and I have to say this was a complex project. There were federal requirements in terms of who was to be served, these were ARPA funds. And another backdrop was kind of the local experience and expectations that was happening during most of this work, which the majority I would say happened in 2023. And at that time, we had a lot of community challenges. A few years prior, we had the sudden closure of Bay City Flowers, about 200 farm workers were without work. Of course, the pandemic and the wildfires happened in 2020, which inspired this funding source. Then we had unprecedented storms, we saw the Oak Avenue neighborhood underwater. Of course, these atmospheric rivers affected a lot of seasonal work and so farm workers couldn't till the land because they were, they were so flooded. And then of course, we had the mass casualty incident at two farms. Given all of that, there was, this is the backdrop in which we're creating these services and these are just some of the key accomplishments that occurred. Identifying the space, this meant that our Chamber of Commerce relocated to more the central heritage main part of Main Street. We launched a new business incubator, which was a separate recovery initiative recommendation. I honestly thought that would launch a little bit later, but opportunity knocked and we had a chance to fund something innovative that we hadn't tried before. This meant executing service provider agreements with all of the nonprofits, who I'll introduce in a moment. And then of course, the site evaluation is what I was referring to that was funded by So who's at the Opportunity Center? I can't talk about the Opportunity Center without talking about the service providers because they're really the secret sauce. We have Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center who provides critical support to small businesses and entrepreneurs. We have Job Train focused on career advancement and workforce development. We have Coastside Venture Studio, the incubator's name, which is operated by American Energy Society. It's designed to spur regional innovation and jobs in new industries. We have our Chamber, who we heard from earlier, and I know you're familiar with their services, but in addition to what the Chamber has typically provided, they relocated to the 600 block of Main and squarely in the Opportunity Center. And they provide the day to day operations and facilities management, which has been referred to as a best practice from the South San Francisco Economic Center, which has struggled with that function. These types of services, Job Train at Renaissance and Coastside Venture Studio did not exist in our community before these funds were available. We have really amazing safety net services, many of who you know through our own grant making program. However, they don't specialize in the gaps that these nonprofits have come forward to fill. Being right along. Okay, so this is really the heart of the presentation. You'll hear from each executive, one slide each, and I'd like to bring Sharon Miller, the CEO of Renaissance, up to the podium to share a few words with us. And Sharon, don't worry about introducing the next speaker, I can do that for you when you're done. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you Karen and thank you Mayor Brownstone, city council members and all the staff of Half Moon Bay. I'm Sharon Miller, I'm the CEO of Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center. I am joined by my extraordinary coworkers. And Renaissance has been providing small business training services for 40 years. We're just honored to now be delivering those services in Half Moon Bay. To date, at the OCC, we've served 171 entrepreneurial residents of Half Moon Bay with small business training and support services that include assistance in finance, marketing, operations management, and industry, industry specific training in the food and childcare sectors. You know, people have great ideas to start businesses, but no one is born knowing accounting. You know, we come in and we really fill that training gap. We provided consulting services to 51 clients, built through new, three new websites, helped a client secure $50,000 loan, and provided four childcare businesses with grants of $1,000 to help them start and grow their businesses. When clients come to us, they get training, they develop critical foundational business skills, they have access to resources, and they have a network of support that they they engage with their other entrepreneurs. There's our photo of our graduating class. It includes, among others, Angel Contreras of Moonside Bakery and Maria Acevado of Bay Area Orchids, who you will meet shortly this evening. We supported 41 businesses to date, that included 29 in existing businesses that we helped stabilize and grow their operations. We helped 12 businesses to launch and that meant going from the idea phase into launching and operating their businesses through the first year. Some of these businesses include Foggy Clothing, owned by Half Moon Bay resident Carlos Alcantara Acosta, who is also here tonight and you'll hear from shortly. Cooking Up Dreams, a catering company owned by Tila Zola, who is now working to open a Hawaiian inspired restaurant. And Coastside Bakery. Solomon and Carmela Silva, the owners, began working at Coastside Bakery in 2010. They came to the Renaissance operated San Mateo Small Business Development Center in 2023. We were able to help them to prepare to purchase the bakery. And then the OCC staff, OCC, excuse me, staff continued to work with Solomon and Carmela, updating their accounting systems, their operations, their business technology. And to date, they've retained six jobs and created three new jobs. So I know you know, small businesses are the social fabric of a community. They're the places where residents can shop, eat and gather. They enable the owners to build financial independence for themselves and their families, create jobs for local residents, and create assets for future generations. We are here, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you so much for all your support. We look forward to continuing to support the small business community in Half Moon Bay. So thank you.
Great, thank you Sharon. Next, I'd like to invite Barry Hathaway, CEO of Job Train.
Way up with the microphone. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a little update on this big project that we've been working on. I wanna start and hopefully have you remember one thing from me today and that's thank you for taking a chance on this model. This is not a usual state of of business for programs like ours. And we've come together with this very particular model of bringing a series of resources together that can lift up the potential for economic mobility for members of the communities we serve. By your supporting us, you've given us a chance to prove that it actually works and that is what we've done here. We've proven that it works and with the third party evaluation that's just been completed, we have all the evidence we need to show that this model we've put together of place-based, culturally competent, multiple provider collaboration to put our communities onto the path of economic mobility is working. Job Train has enrolled, I'm gonna throw some numbers at you here, so bear with me. Job Train has enrolled 284 residents in the program since we started and delivered almost 1,200 services. So far, well, and of those 284 residents, this is kind of important because we're a job training program and a job placement program, you would expect that all 284 of those people came to look for a job. But that's not the case because we don't turn anybody away, we provide services to the people who walk in our door. So of that 284 people, 117 actually engaged in job search activities. Some are getting ready for that engagement, but 117 actually engaged. And of that 117, 77 are placed in jobs. And that is 66% of the clients. Now remember, we don't have any control over the the talents and the skills and the competencies that residents bring to us, unlike our career training programs where we're training people for these jobs. In this model, in the Career Center, the OCC model, we're preparing people with the skills they have to get a job as quickly as possible. So a 66% job placement rate is really best in class and outstanding. We're also building great relationships with employers, it takes time. But in the data that we have right now, Rocket Farms has hired six of our graduate or of our students, our clients, Safeway's hired five, Ritz Carlton has hired four, and a whole slew of employers are hiring one and two of these folks and we're just continuing to build this momentum. You'll notice on the slide here, this is a picture of two of Job Train's students in our medical assistant career training program. I think that's particularly meaningful because of two reasons. One, four clients of our OCC from here did enroll in our medical assistant programs over on the Bayside. And of those four who've enrolled, two have completed the training and they're both working as medical assistants now. One is a couple of days away from completing her training and will get her going onto the job search right away. And the fourth had to drop out of the class, but she's now on the waiting list to re-enroll. So the second reason is we wanna bring medical assistant training here to this community. And these are great jobs with lots of upward mobility, healthcare is always gonna need workers, so this is a really important picture because it demonstrates some critical things for this community. So we have really truly only just begun. We have a lot of ideas and a lot of ways we can continue to build on this model, but the fact of the matter is, we now can say with absolute confidence ourselves and from outside perspective that this model works. And it's, it's a new model, so stay with us, we'll continue to build this out for this city as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Barry. Next, we have Eric Vettel, President and Founder of American Energy Society, here to speak about Coastside Venture Studio, our incubator.
Thank you Karen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of the Council. You know, I'm gonna actually echo what Barry said, in the world of venture, there's a phrase, proof of concept. I think we did it. Proof of concept. I think we did it. I'm really, really pleased. There's so much about this venture studio to celebrate and one giant worry, I'll start with a good news. In just our first year, we outperformed most venture studios and many venture capital firms with a 60% success rate, including Gridwrap, a utility grid enhancing company, which won a prestigious California Energy Commission Award, or Secured Carbon, a virtual marketplace for, to trade tax credits, which established its headquarters in Half Moon Bay, or Phlox Robotics, a startup out of Sweden which just raised a $5 million Series A round and is in the process of hiring locally. In just one year, we earn the admiration and envy of many notable organizations, including but not limited to the Tomcat Center at Stanford University and Skydeck at UC Berkeley, which directs some of their top startups to us. These sort of successes rarely happen to anyone that works with startups. I recently told my board about some of these same successes and they are pleased. But I have one board member who always responds to good news with a simple question. He asks me, what is the one thing that keeps you awake at night? I'll share the same answer I gave to that board member with you. I worry about the lights at the OCC and its venture studio and worry about them getting turned off. If the lights get turned off, I lie awake at night wondering, when do I notify the startups in our next cohort that there is no venture studio? There are some that have already committed and are literally packing up their homes and getting ready to move to the, to Half Moon Bay right now. Mudrat, a new company that can turn mushroom mycelium into building materials, or Happy Dinosaur, which has signed an agreement with Nickelodeon to expand its offerings, or Emergent Technology, which has new broadband technology that can improve and enhance Wi-Fi in rural agricultural regions. Vice Mayor Ruddick, your interest in grid and network security on the coast side has has been instrumental to our successes. Councilmember Johnson, we haven't actually formally met until just now, but your encouragement and interest in startups in Sweden has inspired a great relationship between their embassy and our coast side. And Mr. Mayor, I promise you, we're gonna find a startup that works in wildfire mitigation. I wanna thank the city council for helping us develop businesses here on the coast side, create jobs on the coast side, find new revenue for the coast side. I also wanna thank the city staff too. Been working with you, it's been tremendous. We have a proven formula for success, proof of concept too, and we've showed that and we'll continue to show that in Cohort Two, as long as the lights stay on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Eric actually flew in from Germany about two hours ago and it's been a really great sport in being here. And I'd also like to welcome Kristalyn Geet, CEO of our Chamber.
Kristalyn, Coastside Chamber. Here's a quick snapshot of the Chamber's role in the Opportunity Center of the coast side. When we were in our old building, we estimated that we interacted with roughly 150 people over the course of an entire year. Today, thanks to the new location, inside the Opportunity Center, we're averaging about 150 people every single month. These are visitors coming to explore the coast side, residents looking for community information, many new to our area, and businesses seeking Chamber-specific services. While the Chamber had originally hoped to focus more on helping with provider support, support, program development and marketing, our main role at the OCC has evolved into facilities management and coordinating the different community spaces of the classroom, meeting room and tech studio. That responsibility has been critical to ensuring the building runs as smoothly as we can and the center remains a welcoming hub for clients. Thank you.
Great, thank you Kristalyn. In terms of what's on the horizon, this was a grant that we always knew would sunset at the end of September. This was a city and county contract. And so at the end of next month, the contracts with the providers that you just heard from will sunset along with the city and county agreement. Rent is prepaid and so the lease between the city and Half Moon Bay Partners ends at the beginning of next year, technically January 14th. Ever since the evaluation was was conceived and all the providers were aware of these realities around these dates and this funding source, we've been working diligently together to try to identify sustainable funding streams, which is quite a challenge. The City of Half Moon Bay partnered with the City of South San Francisco and requested an earmark from Senator Adam Schiff. Senator Schiff is on the Agricultural Committee and the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Committee, so we thought that a fitting choice. We heard from his staff that the request is making its way through the committee process and they seem to find it promising. There's also a request submitted to the Sabrato Family Foundation that's being stewarded by Job Train and Renaissance. There was a proposal submitted to San Mateo County Supervisor Ray Mueller for District Three from the City of Half Moon Bay. And also, Coastside Venture Studio was able to secure an investment and is in the process of identifying a necessary match. Also, ideally, the providers in the Opportunity Center will remain in the Opportunity Center providing valuable services to the community. If there's a scenario where that can't happen because of a funding shortfall, there is also an option to, if the providers are able to provide program service revenue, to find alternate locations, potentially co-locating at other service sites where they, there may be synergy in programming. So the city will try to broker those conversations as there's interest in availability if we can't all remain under one roof with this kind of one-stop-shop service model. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take clarifying questions from council.
I had a couple, so the lease is paid for through the end of December, is that what you said?
Right, so the Chamber shares in that cost, the Chamber makes a monthly payment. The Lion's share is the city and that is already paid with ARPA funds through, let's say this calendar year, technically we would have to move out by January 14th.
But that covers the lease for all four organizations?
That covers the space and keeping the lights on.
And?
Keeping the lights on.
Okay. So lights on for everyone who's there now through the end of December, correct?
Right.
Okay.
However, there isn't funding for their actual program services.
Right, so each one of those organizations is seeking funding.
Yes.
And um, so we don't really have a breakdown. so we don't really have a breakdown of what kind of funding is being sought and for how long, you know? It's $10,000 cover two months, three, you know? We don't have any of that information. We just know that they've all applied to different groups like Sobrato and uh, other folks, so.
Right, we know what the funding requests were and how they're itemized and submitted those to those respective parties.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from? Yeah, please.
Thank you. Uh, as I learn more about what is housed at the OCC, it's very informative. I'm trying to distinguish between, there's three of them in the county?
Yes.
So is each one totally separate, or are there similarities? Or is it kind of a combination of all the above?
Sure, so all three are considered economic advancement centers. The first one was born out of South San Francisco in two thousand and twenty-one. And at that time, county and Half Moon Bay leadership toured that facility and were very inspired by the results they were seeing and wanted to invest in what they considered resource deserts. So the County Board of Supervisors decided to allocate two and a half million dollars each to North Fair Oaks and to the coast side. And so, but North Fair Oaks launched next, I would say, in the end of two thousand and twenty-three. And then at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four, I think in January, the Chamber moved in, and then we had our ribbon cutting in April. So the Opportunity Center has the shortest runway, if you will, in terms of how long we've been open. Those centers have commonality in terms of their mission, and Job Train and Renaissance are housed out of all three. What makes the coast side unique is the addition of an incubator in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. And then um, I'm trying to understand a little bit more the lease. You know, when you say the light's on, that's utilities. So are utilities paid, too? I, I didn't know. Normally leases just cover uh, the building itself. And I know there's probably what, water sewer and electrical? I don't know if there's gas there or not. So I always, you know, if the utilities are included as part of the lease or no?
Uh, the utilities are not included in part of the lease, but there's thinking around um, covering those utility costs without dipping into the general fund.
Okay, I just kind of curious because if, if this ends September thirtieth, are we concerned that this is September second? I mean, are we worried twenty, you know, twenty-eight days? Or, or not concerned? We think we can figure something out?
I, I'm happy to respond to that question, yeah. You know, it, the, the timing is short. Um, we, we had um, some things in the works that we hoped to come through. Um, and, and just recently, in the last month and a little over a month, um, they didn't come to fruition. And so, as you can see, there's a lot of activity trying to pursue ongoing funding. Um, each of the providers is looking at ways that they might be able to continue um, providing services. And, and, you know, by having that prepaid rent for the facility, that hopefully creates that foundation and, and allows us to focus more on funding in, or the operations and, and services in the short term. And as Karen said, we're looking at some of the funding that we received from the county and, and how it's been used to see if we can't utilize some of that to, to, as Karen said, keep the lights on. Um, our, our hope is that some of these funding sources come through and give us a little more runway to continue to look for a more sustainable way to fund this. And we're not, we're not the only ones in this boat. Uh, you know, all three centers are in this boat. The, I would say the, the North Fair Oaks one is a little different because it's county-operated. Um, North Fair Oaks, for those that don't know, is an unincorporated community adjacent to Redwood City. And so they receive their municipal services directly from the county. And so there's a little different relationship there. And the county actually purchased a building there to provide these services. Um, and so they're in a little different position. But overall, we're all looking at ways to sustainably fund these going forward. And that's, you know, that's always a challenge when you, when you're entrepreneurial and you, you try new things and you take risks is, new programs don't usually come with new ongoing funding sources. Um, and our hope was that through this proof of concept, that the environment would be in such a position that we could find that ongoing funding. I think changes politically at the federal and state levels have, have created some challenges for us. Um, but again, we've heard the proof of concept is there, so we're going to keep shopping that as long as we can to try to keep these services in the community.
Because I worry, are, are, are all three of them competing against each other for funding?
Uh, not really. Um, Karen can probably speak more to that.
No, I wouldn't say that at all. We have different electeds, we have um, completely different demographics, we have different industries and sectors. Uh, so far, it's been very collaborative. I would say the evaluation is a manifestation of that collaboration. So I haven't sensed any level of competitiveness. And quickly back to the utilities. If we were to remain whole through the end of this calendar year, the utilities I'm, I've calculated are around eight or nine thousand dollars. So it's not an insurmountable amount. And um, I foresee some cost saving potentially in some other areas. I think CSFA would have a slight surplus that could cover that. Um, I know South San Francisco uses affordable housing funds to fund some of their operation. And the justification is that they're mitigating homelessness by creating upward mobile, economic upward mobility. So um, there are different ways to look at it.
And, and I, did you have another question? Or just an extension of your question? Part of the reason we ensured that this item was on the agenda tonight is that if some of these opportunities were to come through and we had the opportunity to extend some contracts, and, and just to be completely transparent, if there was a need for some sort of local match by the city, it gives us the opportunity to come back on the sixteenth and talk about that. Um, as your city manager, I will say, sadly, there is no way that the city of Half Moon Bay can afford to provide these services to the community. It's an expensive endeavor. I think it's a crucial endeavor. Um, the services have really been helpful to some of our most vulnerable um, residents. But it's also been, I think, really helpful to our businesses, which, as you've heard and as we know, you know, Half Moon Bay is built on small businesses. That is a real core part of our economy. And all of the services here, I think, really build those small businesses. So we think we've got some crucial services that, again, there's, there's no way that the city can support this through our general fund as a whole. But there may be some asks on the sixteenth um, to, to help fill some of the gaps. We don't know what those will look like yet, but we wanted to give ourselves that opportunity by making this presentation tonight, making sure we're informed that if there is an ask or if we just have found some funding and need to renew and extend contracts, we have a window to do that before the end of September.
And, and is there anything that has come up in Half Moon Bay that maybe can supplement or collaborate with? And I, I just think of College San Mateo. And, and I know that there, that there's some redundancy there or not, or maybe there's something, you know, broke together.
Yeah, the College of San Mateo is a great partner. And before their brick and mortar was ready, they were actually operating and did a soft launch out of the Opportunity Center. So um, the providers out of the OCC and CSM just organically have this really lovely pipeline. Um, I was just talking to one of the providers earlier today, and there was a conversation with CSM about potentially using their classroom space. Um, because Renaissance in particular um, offers a lot of classes as opposed to one-on-one counseling sessions. So, yeah, I definitely think there's some potential resources that we could leverage at the local level because of the really great partnerships that are built in a, a short amount of time.
Thank you.
Uh, before I bring someone, uh, um, which, which community used home, um, housing funds, did you say?
South San Francisco.
South San Francisco? Maybe we'll check in to see if that's something that may or may not hit our parameters.
Uh, Councilmember Penrose would like to speak.
Councilmember Penrose, please.
Yes, um, Karen, uh, I, I was unclear. The innovator, um, the incubator, excuse me, incubator section, are they working to provide incubating businesses in Half Moon Bay? Or are they helping anybody in Half Moon Bay who wants to start a business?
Yeah, that's a great question. So um, the goal is to identify startups. They could be local, they could be international, that are in line with coast side values and assets. So we have certain verticals we're looking for. It's not just an incubator where any idea is welcome. Um, it's specifically looking for startups that are looking for solutions to a changing climate. So that could be in agriculture, that could be in food, that could be in water. But there has to be that relevance and a, a local benefit to the community. Um, Eric, do you want to add anything?
Well, while he's coming up, I, I can also say that, you know, to your question, obviously, the, the services are here to provide, provide support to local startups and help them build. But as we've heard from Eric, and I'm sure we'll hear more, it also is an opportunity to bring businesses to Half Moon Bay, to bring new industries. And that's really been the, the big impact, I think, so far.
Eric, can you hear me? That's what we target. I mean, it's an interesting KPI, isn't it, not to have? If we hit one, if we hit one company, that's a force multiplier effect that has an impact on the entire community. That's what we're aiming for. It's, it's not easy. Startups, getting a startup off the ground, what is it? Eight, ten percent uh, make it, ninety percent failure rate typically in the first year. What we're trying to do is focus on startups, not only that, just anything that can succeed, but ones that really affect the coast side. Like Karen was saying, ag tech, water tech, built environment, things that matter. Bring them here, create jobs, tax revenues. I mean, this is an enormous force multiplying effect. We can hit one. And then, and again, I keep repeating, there, I love your line, it's proof of concept. I mean, what we did in that first year, that doesn't happen. That doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I think that doesn't quite answer my question. Now, my question is, are you looking to have startups that are located in Half Moon Bay?
Yes.
Or are you just talking about having a general effect on the things that matter here in Half Moon Bay?
We are trying to create new businesses that operate out of Half Moon Bay and give back to Half Moon Bay. It's for, for Half Moon Bay.
I would go so far, also, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's preference, there's local preference. But if there's talent beyond local that could benefit the coast side, they're eligible. Is that fair?
Yes, that is, that is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the question. Thank you, Eric. Okay, we have three public comments.
And we have one online speaker as well.
Okay. Why don't we start with the online speaker?
Okay, Sid Young.
Hi, this has been very informative. Um, I'm sorry you're running out of your funding, but um, like a homeowner or a family might look at their budget and see where they could cut. Is it a possibility to cut out one of the programs or two of the programs and keep the other? I'm interested in the incubator because I know in the past, Half Moon Bay had Adwalla, they had um, GoPro. All those businesses started here and are gone. But um, you know, I, I would like to see an incubator stay. The Job Train is, it didn't look like the numbers were all that great compared to the other two on the peninsula over in Menlo Park or South City. But um, if it's a possibility of cutting out one or two that aren't carrying their weight, is that something you've looked at? And um, I, I just, I really think that the incubator idea is the best idea of the three. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move to our speakers who are in the room. First speakers are Maria Acevedo and Juan Aguillares, Bay Area Orchids.
Muy buenas noches. Eh, mi esposa Maria Acevedo y yo, Juan Manuel Aguillares.
Good evening. It's my wife, uh, Maria Acevedo, and myself.
Juan Manuel Aguillares.
Juan Manuel Aguillares.
Hemos recidido aquí en Half Moon Bay por veintisiete años.
We've resided here in Half Moon Bay for twenty-five years.
Y este, en el año veinte veinte, octubre del veinte veinte, este, empezamos una pequeña empresa.
So in tw- in uh, October of two thousand and twenty, we started a small business.
Y se, es, es nombrada Bay Area Orchids.
Which is called Bay Area Orchids?
Y su función es cultivo de orquídeas.
So we cultivate orchids.
Estamos localizados en el doce mil quinientos once San Mateo Road. Quinientos once, San Mateo Road.
So we're located at twelve five zero zero eleven on San Mateo Road.
Por ahora está siendo operada por nosotros y nuestros hijos.
And for now, it's a family-owned business operated by ourselves and our children.
Y es, eh, cuando comenzamos la empresa, tuvimos dificultades porque fue tiempo de pandemia.
And when we started with this business, it was very difficult because we started out in the pandemic.
Pedimos apoyo, un préstamo a los bancos, pero nos dijeron que era el peor tiempo para poner un negocio.
We, we asked the banks for a loan, but they said this is a bad time for, to be asking for a loan.
Y eh, la operamos la compañía por tres años con dificultades, falta de conocimiento de, como, no como cultivar las orquídeas, pero ya en, en empresa es como vender el producto y financieramente.
So we operated the business for about three years, lack of really understanding, not in cultivating orchids per se, but really knowing the business side of it.
Pero este llegó hace dos años, conocimos eh, Renanse.
So two years ago, we came across Renaissance.
Y este, tuvimos la invitación y pues la verdad, tuvimos el apoyo en cómo las, los entrenamientos, cómo fue este, funcionar, que funcionara la empresa porque eh, no ha sido fácil.
Because we got the invitation. And so we really kind of learned, you know, how to operate the business. And to tell you the truth, it hasn't been easy.
Y pues la capacitación que Renanse nos ha, nos ha, nos ha apoyado con la capacitación y este, la pusimos en práctica y la verdad ha sido muy, muy favorable para nosotros.
And so Renaissance has provided with training. And what we've done is we've put it in action, and it's been great.
Y pues la verdad pues, yo sé que muchas empresas pueden empezar sus pequeños, a operar pequeña, en pequeño, pero este, con el apoyo de Renanse, obvio este, es, le facilitaría todo para ellos.
I know that some businesses could start small, but with the help of Renaissance, I think it would facilitate them all.
Yo sí les pediría que apoyen a Renanse porque habemos muchos latinos emprendedores, pero este, por falta de información a veces no, no lo hacemos.
And I would say support Renaissance. And to tell you the truth, there's a lot of Latino small business owners. Uh, but sometimes because we don't know, we don't really give it a try.
Pero con la capacitación que ellos apoyan, yo pienso que no habría excusa.
I think there wouldn't be any excuse with all the training and support that they provide. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Our next speaker is um, Carlos Alcantar from Foggy Clothing Company.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I hope everyone is doing well. My name is Carlos Alcantara Costa, and I am a proud, proud resident of Half Moon Bay. And I'm also the owner of Foggy Clothing. September sixth, I'll be opening um, the doors to my first brick and mortar at Dirty Avenue Portola, El Granada. And I wouldn't be standing here today without the incredible support of the Renaissance Center um, and the coast side team as well. When I first started this journey, I knew I had a passion, but I didn't have all the tools or knowledge to take my ideas and turn them into a real business. Renaissance came the, became the foundation for me. They walked me through the essentials, getting my business license and permits, making sure I understand or understood what I needed to operate, what I needed to operate legally and professionally. Those early steps may sound simple, but as a new entrepreneur, they, they can be overwhelming. And having Renaissance there to guide me made me, made all the difference. From there, the classes gave me so much more than just information. They gave me the confidence, learning about business planning, marketing, and financial management. They helped me build the structure for Foggy Clothing. And I wasn't just learning theory, I was able to apply what I learned directly to my brand. The one-on-one consultations with The one-on-one consultations with consultants was a game changer. Having someone sit down with me, listening to my specific challenges and other tailor advice, helped me move forward at times when I might have otherwise felt stuck. Those meetings gave me direction and reminded me that I wasn't on this journey alone. With their guidance, I was able to launch my website, a huge step in bringing Foggy Clothing to more people. And now I'm taking the next big leap with my storefront in El Granada. When started, was started as an idea, has turned into a brand that will have a home in the community, and that's a dream I've had for years. Renaissance didn't stop me, Renaissance didn't stop there. They have also been right beside me as I prepare for my grand opening, helping me plan, organize, and making sure I had access to resources so this event can be a true celebration of community. And on top of that, with their support, I was able to receive a grant from Montero Credit Union, which has provided vital financial hope as I set my store and get ready to welcome customers. I can honestly say without the Renaissance Center and the Coastside team, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't gotten this far quickly. They've been a steady hand in a process that can feel overwhelming at times. And more importantly, they've shown me that there is a network of people invested in seeing small businesses like mine succeed. This journey has just been about starting, this journey hasn't been just about starting a business. It's about building a stronger connection to the community I love. I'm from Half Moon Bay, now I'm planting roots in El Granada with Foggy Clothing. Thanks to Renaissance, I'm doing, I'm doing it with the tool, support, and confidence, not just to open my doors, but to grow and sustain my business for years to come. To the entire Renaissance Coastside team, to Montero Credit Union, and to everyone who has been part of this journey, journey, thank you. And I'm excited for what's ahead, and I can't wait to welcome everyone to my Foggy Clothing.
Thank you, Carlos, for coming this evening. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Joaquin Jimenez.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members, city staff, and most of the public. Think about economic mobility. Know the opportunities on the coast side is about economic mobility, opportunity. In our community, we're struggling with paying no rents. If you see the services that we provide, know the numbers that you see coming through the office monthly. It's a lot of people, a lot of services. Through Job Train, Job Train offers upskilled trainings. The last, during the last year, we've given over 30 laptops to community members after taking a course in basic computer skills. We have offered CPR training, per se training. Again, it's about economic mobility. In collaboration with the Renaissance Center, many of the people that are taking these courses can actually open up a new business, childcare businesses. We just recently completed a pesticide applicator training living in a farming community. Or residents that took that course can become certified pesticide applicators anywhere in California. So this is, it's about economic mobility. The concept of the OCC, what you said on the coast side, is about economic mobility, giving our community a better chance to have better income. We are present in the community. We do info tables three days a week. Tuesdays, you'll find us in Moonridge. Wednesdays, you'll find us at the library. Thursdays, you can find us at Safeway, New Leaf, or mi familia shopping center. We cover the whole coast, from Montero to Pescadero. You will find our flyers even here at the community center, on the wall, downtown Half Moon Bay, our local businesses, about all the events that we offer in our community. It's an opportunity that the coast has been needing for many years. I don't know if you remember, 2019, when Bay City Nursery now closed their doors. 250 people became unemployed. Many of those people, Maria and her husband Manuel Acevedo, they were workers of the nursery. Economic mobility gives the opportunity to open up a new business, state farm. And many other farm workers actually moved to other jobs, hospitality jobs. We offer the training. Remember, economic mobility, it is a main, it's a main concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Is there anyone else online? Okay, so we'll close public comments. So next steps for council, we have received the update. A number of these organizations are waiting to see if they'll get funding, right, Matthew?
Yeah, I think really it's back with staff and the organizations we partner with at the OCC and working with the county and others to see if there's ongoing funding opportunities. And my hope, the best news could be that we return on the 16th with good news and the extension of contracts. And we'll keep you posted and keep the community posted about that and the ongoing future of the OCC and the services that have been provided.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Karen. We're gonna take a, yeah, we'll reconvene here at a quarter of, okay, quarter to 10. Okay, our next item on our agenda is item 10C, Measure D Transfers. Let me have a quick staff report. Great.
Good evening, Mayor Brownstone and council members. Yeah, I'll be quickly taking you through the Measure D process. I'll first give a bit of background on Measure D, discuss the transfer process for Measure D, and provide some recommendations related to a decision tonight. So Measure D is the city's growth management system. Its purpose is to manage the rate and quality of development in the city on an annual basis. It's, accommodates up to 1.5% of population growth that's split between the downtown and outside of downtown. Within the downtown, 5.5% is initially provided, and then council each year can approve an additional 0.5%. And historically, that has been the case, as it was for this year. There's very few exemptions under Measure D. These only consist of replacements on a one-to-one base, basis and density bonus law. The transfer process has only been done a couple of times in the history of Measure D. Most recently in 2019 and 2021, there was a transfer. It is at the discretion of city council whether or not to approve transfers, how many transfers to approve, and what criteria to use for transfers. In 2019, the council did adopt a resolution providing guidance on criteria, criteria to consider for transfers, given that the code is pretty minimal in what it provides in terms of the actual process. However, it is clear that transfers can only occur after September 1st, and only remaining downtown base allocations, which is that initial 0.5% of the allocations for the downtown are eligible to be transferred. At the March 25th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation for city council to approve transfers, any available transfers, as well as some more specific recommendations that we'll get into. This just helps break down a bit more about how allocations are broken down. So for 2025, there was the 1.5% made up 67 allocations. That was broken down between the downtown and the outside of downtown. The 22 available allocations for downtown were approved at that Planning Commission meeting in March. And downtown, there was only three allocations that have been issued so far. So of the base allocations, there are 20 remaining that would be available for transfer. In 2019, when city council adopted the resolution for procedures, there was five criteria provided. Within, among these criteria, staff has found that those being recommended tonight do meet those criteria, which is there are no known pending applications remaining downtown. All single-family residences being recommended include an affordable component such as an ADU. All projects recommended include some sort of affordable housing that is more broad than our typical term for affordable housing, but that expands to an ADU, multifamily units, duplexes, et cetera. And then council may provide any additional applicable criteria that aligns with city standards that they might like to provide direction on. But staff has put together a recommendation for you, as I'm sure you saw in the staff report for this evening. There was one additional criteria that I should mention. It does, in that resolution, it mentions that all applicants should fill out any development permits in advance of transfers. However, given the number of transfers and to actually put together the materials for those development permits can be quite costly for an applicant. So given that they might not actually get a transfer, staff did not require that of the applicants. However, we did send out an app, a form for all applicants to fill out and request if they were serious about being considered for a transfer for a Measure D allocation. Among that, we did receive a response from 13, or sorry, 14 applicants out of 16 that were previously deferred. At the March 25th Planning Commission meeting, we, the Planning Commission ratified the scoring for all of the outside of downtown allocations. There was initially 47 total allocations that came in. 22 of those were issued as a result of the scoring of that meeting. And then 25 of them were deferred, and 21 of those allocations requested to be considered for a transfer, and that's split across 14 different applicants. The table here on the right, you can see breaks down how these allocations are and the type of units that they included. We're recommending that council consider prioritizing the transfers based on the scoring that was ratified by the Planning Commission in March, which is the scoring based off of the initial application checklist for those applicants that were deferred. This is because the scoring actually, when looking at it, it encompasses any other criteria that typically council might consider for transfers. Previously, in 2019 and 2021, there was a focus on transfers for units within the town center, ADU-only applications. And then another criteria that we considered might be important is applicants who have been deferred multiple times. And those, and then as well as Planning Commission's recommendation they provided, which among providing a recommendation to approve transfers as available, they also recommended that two applicants get top priority for transfers. This was due to one applicant only received a portion of the allocations they provided for. They, which is 940 Main Street, as it was found that they were not, since their need to acquire more allocations, it was less pertinent that they had their allocations immediately, and they could use some of those allocations to distribute it more equitably for other applicants to be able to move forward. As well as an additional applicant, 490 Pine, who was just below the line. They also recommended be strongly considered. This table shows the 20 applicants recommended for transfers of the 21 that requested to be considered for transfer. So to reiterate, staff is recommending that the city council approve transferring the 20 remaining downtown base allocations to applicants outside of downtown in accordance with the scoring from the initial checklist. The next steps, if council accepts the, tonight's recommendation. If not, we would come back as directed by city council, or if directed by city council with other criteria. But if accepted, then the next time staff would likely be here to discuss Measure D would be at the December 2nd city council meeting, where staff will discuss next year's allocations for city council to approve, as well as some potential administrative changes, potentially to the scoring or the application, but relatively minor in nature. And then the next application period for any applicants deferred or new applicants would be in January 2026.
Thank you for the great staff report. Really appreciate that. Clarifying questions from council?
I have one question. Thank you. Measure D, right? So, speaking, yeah, I am, hopefully I am. Are we proposing to transfer the same way with, using the same criteria that was established in 2019?
2019 just provided the criteria for, in that resolution. I can't recall the exact way that transfers were awarded that year, or how many were available. It has varied from year to year based on council's direction. In 2021, the direction that was provided was focusing on applicants that had deed-restricted affordable units, were in the town center, or were ADUs only. So we're, this scoring does encapsulate that from the 2021 hearing, but I don't recall the exact criteria for 2019 other than the resolution.
Okay, thanks.
Deborah, did you have any clarifying questions?
No, I'm fine. Thanks.
Great. There we have two public comments. Anyone online, public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, first speaker is Tim Pond.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for considering these transfers tonight. Couple of things I'd like to point out. The downtown map is ridiculous. It goes down Main Street, takes a dog leg, goes around Metzger Avenue, comes back on this street, down that street. So one of my applicants has a home that wants to put it in ADU that's about two blocks from all the restaurants down here, and it's not included in downtown. I just think that's something to point out. And Measure D was actually thought of like 25 years ago when there was a problem with single-family homes being built one after another in subdivisions with no forethought of JDOs or accessory dwelling units to provide for the changing demographic that we're looking at today. If we want incubators and people to come to town to work here, we have to provide housing. There is a housing crisis. This is a chance to take a little shot at it by providing a few more units. It's not a big solution, but it does make a dent in it. Another one of my projects is further down, one of my applicants, 2210, on the highway down south here a little bit. They have a big lot. They could easily put a second unit on it. The backyard is not used, but since they couldn't get the walking distance to downtown, points, it wasn't considered. Now, actually, a lot of people can't walk or bike, and I don't think this was even thought of, that that's discriminating against people that are, you know, somehow unable to walk. to walk to shops. I mean, this is nice to think of, all of us walking to shops, but elderly people and other people can't walk. So in a large way, that point system discriminates. They also constitute total infill development, very low infrastructure costs. And also, I had two clients just decline their Measure Ds, and they went into the vapor this year, so you guys lost two potential housing units, because it took quite a while for them to get issued, and by the time they were issued, the economy kind of didn't look so good. One of his guy's mother's caretakers got deported to Venezuela, so their whole situation changed, so they're just not building them. So when they expire, they go away. So these two would be appreciated to have two more issued in their place, just to keep that housing stock going. And thank you very much for listening, and again, for considering the transfer.
Thank you, Tim. Next speaker is Kevin Grenon.
I guess I'm a little confused, because currently, I'm on this list to be approved, and I've written and labored over this history of my family in Half Moon Bay for weeks. And I don't know that I should be taking your time up if I'm on this list already. I don't know if you're voting on this tonight, or if you really want to hear this history. It's not that interesting, but, you know, it was just, my, my problem with the whole criteria was that it was, it was all very objective, which of course it has to be. Nowhere on it did allow you to give your story about how long you've lived here, why you want to build an ADU, what contribution have you been to Half Moon Bay while you've been here, what have your kids done while they've been here, and that's what this represents. But again, it's a long, it's been a long night, and do you really need to hear this? Do you want to hear this? I kind of feel like I should let you on to the business of deciding whether or not you're going to accept those 20 names that Acoi has provided tonight, and we'll see where that goes. So any comment to that?
Well, you only have three minutes altogether.
I think I've used most of it.
All right, well, thanks, though, for coming up. Thanks, Kevin. I think that concludes public comment, nothing online, right? Okay. You ready? You ready? Yeah?
Curiosity. Pillar Cito's 219 is a Jdu, which I talked to Tim Pond over the weekend. Thank you for clarifying that, because I didn't know, I didn't know, never had that at the Planning Commission level. That's on this list, and it's no request or transfer consideration. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so two applicants did not request or fill out the form, and multiple reminders were sent out. And so they were one of the applicants that did not choose to request for transfer. I won't speak for them, but I believe there wasn't tension behind that, from what I heard. And the other applicant that didn't request for transfer actually had applied twice. They paid the fee both times, but they received it for one of their applications, so I believe they didn't need to likely move forward with the second one.
But they have little story poll things on the house. I noticed that on the Pillar Cito's house. I was just wondering, they had like the story polls showing where the structure was going to be?
I'm not sure if that's the same site. They wouldn't have a development application that would be requiring that for this specific property that was initially applying for the Measure D. Additionally, the Jdu is a junior accessory dwelling unit that would likely be fully within existing space, so they wouldn't need to do story polls, so it's likely a different development project in the same area.
Deborah, did you have any comments at this moment?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I would like us at some point to consider the possibility of rolling over, you know, people who don't use them. They can be rolled over and added for new people who need to build ADUs. I just think it makes sense to just not let them expire. But I think that's a discussion we need to have. There's probably all kinds of consequences of that, but in any case, I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution approving a transfer of the 20 remaining downtown base Measure D allocations to be used for new dwelling units proposed outside of the downtown area, prioritized according to the scoring within the Measure D application checklist, and as shown within Exhibit A to the resolution.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangas?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is Item 10D, Amendment to the Tolemy Contract for Software to Support the Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Programs. Do we have a staff report on this? Great. Come.
Good evening, council, mayor, community. an item on an amendment to the city's contract with Tolemy, a vendor that provides the rental registration and rent stabilization programs, a database platform. So I'll just provide a little brief background. So the rent registry and rent stabilization programs were a product of a direction from council from a November 7, 2023 council meeting, where we held a study session on tenant protections. And during this time, in the summer of 2024, the programs were launched, and at that time, the city contracted with Tolemy, a vendor that specializes in housing management to collect, to provide the data collection aspect of the programs. And the software is a web-based platform that provides services for landlords and staff. On the landlord's side, it provides landlords the database to complete their registration of their rental units, complete fee payments, and on the staff's side, it provides the ability to manage the day-to-day administrative aspects of the programs. So during the initial implementation of the programs, we have spent around $38,430 on the programs. During the last council meeting that I was here in May 6, 2025, council was presented with three options in regards to the future of the programs, and ultimately, council selected Option 3, which includes the, which is the retention of both of the programs with some modifications. And council also directed staff to come back in six months with an update on the programs and the performance, as well as the fiscal impacts of the programs. The software is still needed for the continuation of this pilot program that will take us all the way until December. So the current contract with Tolemy actually ended in June 2025, which is why I am here today to request that amendment to the contract, so that it'll take us all the way until December, and possibly with the extension of the programs. So during that same, sorry, during that same council meeting, council and as well as the community expressed some concerns in regards to the privacy, the privacy policy and the data management of the software. So staff actually conducted research around vendors similar to Tolemy and those of other organization, I mean jurisdictions, that have similar programs. And we worked with the city's IT and legal teams on those findings, and ultimately, we concluded that Tolemy provides a sufficient safeguards around the data that we are collecting for the programs. So some of the fiscal implications of moving forward with that amendment, so Tolemy actually prepared an amendment which can be found in the packet as Attachment A, and they proposed an amendment till February 28, 2026, with the option to extend that contract until June 30, 2026. So the cost associated with that is either around $17,000 till February, or $25,000 if extended all the way through June 30, 2026. So in conclusion, staff recommend the extent, approve the extension of the amendment with the idea that in December, when we come back and discuss the future of the programs, we have that option to extend it until June 2026. And that is all I have. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I just had one quick question. On the issue of the ensuring privacy of the data and stuff, did that include conversation or consultation with Evelyn De Souza, I think, right?
It did. As many of you know, we have a member of our community, Evelyn De Souza, who is, I mean, this is what she does. She works for, she's worked for large tech companies in data privacy and security. She's generously offered in the past to look at practices of potential vendors. This was no exception, and she came to the same conclusion that our team did, which was, she made some recommendations of how they could improve, but overall, they had acceptable practices, and our agreement protects the data. You know, we hear concerns about the 23andMe impact, where their data got sold. In that case, when you use 23andMe, you don't own the data, they do. In this case, this is our data, it retain, we retain it no matter what happens with this company. And so between that and the fact that they've got the right practices in place and the right security measures in place, we're confident that we're getting the best quality security.
Great, I'm glad we had that resource in town, and that she gave us good advice on that. Thanks. Other clarifying questions?
Thank you. When we mentioned coming back at six months, was it six months from May, June, or July?
So the way staff interpreted it was within six months of the second year of implementation, because implementation of the program, and please correct me if I'm wrong, happens during the summer. And so what we were looking for was six more months of data and experience for the council to be able to consider and evaluate, so that we plan to bring something back either in December or January to talk about the future of the program. It won't really change much as far as the work we're doing. We've implemented the second year of the programs. We're now in outreach and enforcement for those that remain, and that's where we'll be when we get to December or January. And so the workload won't likely change between now and then much.
The only reason I ask is if we do it before December 31st, you know, depending what happens, you know, there's four grand to go from January 1st to February 28th, and then eight grand to go from March 1st to June 30th. So depending when we do, I know December's tough with scheduling, you know, with the holidays, but if it was February, then if we extend it to February, then, you know, I'm trying to get to, is there a date certain we can kind of know we're coming back?
We can work on that. And Irma, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, part of the reason that first piece isn't December 31st, it's in February, is when we come back in December or January, if the council were to decide to end these programs, we will want to be able to work with them to unwind some things and secure the data and do some of that work. And so we do need a little bit of additional time to continue to work with Tolemy in the unwinding of the programs, whereas if we choose to extend it at least one more year by having the contract in place till the end of the fiscal year, that allows us time to look at a longer-term contract or explore other vendors if we want to keep the program going.
So I'm just thinking out loud, I'd rather not go ahead and say, well, we're going to extend it to June, just do it at the time, if we're going to have this, I really want us to commit to something in January, then if that's what we want to do, you know, if we wanted to have the six months, and then if we agree to proceed forward, we can extend it to June 30th. I just didn't want to, because then is there, I'm worried we wouldn't get to it, you know? We get caught up in other priorities, and I want to make sure we address this, so let's, and if we have to unwind, if we make sure we have enough time to unwind.
Yeah, and staff is actually on the same page as you on this. I think the way it's presented, the extension all the way through June is an option, and obviously, we wouldn't exercise that option were we to decide to unwind the programs when we come back later this year, early next year. So the contract is written so that it's all taken care of in one action, but to actually go from the February date to the end of June, it would take staff executing that extension, which again, obviously, we wouldn't do if council directed otherwise. Again, Irma, I'll give it back to you if that's, yeah.
That's spot on.
Okay, thanks.
I was just wondering whether there was some language that might be removed, to be a little more protective of local folks. And one of the sections says, "With other users, when you share your personal information or otherwise interact in the public areas with other users, such information may be viewed by all users and may be publicly distributed outside. With your consent, we may disclose your personal information for any other purpose, but with your consent." It's kind of clumsy wording, but seems to me that it would be a little more protective if we would take that out. The other one I'm concerned about is, "If the company is involved in a merger, acquisition, or asset sale, your personal data may be transferred. We will provide notice before your personal data is transferred and becomes subject to a different privacy policy." I don't think that's very protective of folks, and if we could make an exception in the template language for Half Moon Bay, I think that would be good.
Yeah, I can definitely present that information to them, and I will say, all of the data that we do collect is completely confidential, and we don't share that with, like, tenants or other landlords. It is just for city use and for that data collection aspect.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, maybe to further reflect that, that we look at their template language and take out things that are a little loosey-goosey about transferring information and stuff like that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's fair.
I think that's fair, and I think the spirit of that is, if they were to merge or sell, and we continued as a customer, so maybe we need to clarify that as well.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, just back on to that, you know, when you say with consent, maybe, maybe more precise, like you'll have an option to opt out or opt in, because that's what you see a lot in those privacy. Because that's what you see a lot in those privacy.
That puts the burden sort of on like a landlord. I think we want to try to get things that is troubled.
They have to offer you an opportunity, right. We'll clearly offer the opportunity whether or not a landlord consents to sharing any of the information based on those two situations.
Right, and it sounds like, and I agree, let's put the burden on us and Ptolemy. That it's not, well, if you don't respond, we're going to use it. It's if we don't hear from you, we will not share it. It requires that express written consent that's, you know, requires to share it, it requires a step by the property owner, not. You know, like silences compliance.
So just be cognizant of template language that doesn't really reflect our, you know, desire to protect privacy.
One more question then, when we analyze after six months, we'll get into much more detail about costs and what's impact to staff. And you know, the various things that Tom about earlier, so we don't, tonight's just really just making sure we make it through to that.
I have a question. When you guys analyze this at the end, when we do this process, which I think is an important process. Will it take in factor like enforcement and all the little blues and screws, everything?
Yeah, we'll bring back a comprehensive assessment and information about the costs and impacts of the program on city operations. And what we project that to be in the future and the impacts we've heard from residents and the community as well.
The landowners too, the people that are.
Yeah, that's, that would be encompassed in the residents and community, yeah.
I'm also keeping track of housing stock that has been left out of, like taken out of the market. Since that's something that was asked as well. So there's a couple of data things that I'm keeping track of.
Deborah, did you have any clarifying questions?
Nothing clarifying, no.
Okay, and then do we have any comments online?
We do have one public comment, Sid Young.
Yeah, let's take, we're going to take public comment.
Go ahead, Sid.
I just haven't really understood this whole program. I understand it was because you had no idea how many rentals you had in your inventory in Half Moon Bay. But there was nothing listed tonight that showed the efficacy of this program so far. And when you discussed it back, I think it was in May, at least they had some data points showing that the program was in the red. And one of the council members said they wanted to hear specific objections and stuff. My friend who sold all three of her Half Moon Bay units went to bed already. So I would just like to say that I don't know why you didn't show any particular information tonight. Is this software company that you've hired to do this in Boston? I think that was my understanding. But you know, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, AB 1482 protects tenants. So is this creating housing or is it making landlords sell their properties like my friend did? All three of them in Half Moon Bay because you guys decided to tax, put this tax on property owners. That's my concern and you didn't show any of that detail tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. No more comments, nothing, okay, great. Okay, council conversations, Deborah, you had something to, I'll start with you.
Now, yeah, all I wanted to say was, yeah, let's extend the contract by all means. In fact, I'd like to make a motion that we do extend the contract.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Deborah. Go ahead, Deborah, make the motion.
Yeah, I'm looking for the, yeah, I move that we, where are we? That we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve an amendment to the Ptolemy contract through February 2026 for $16,666.67 with an option to extend through June 2026 for a total of $25,000.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangast.
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick.
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up. Item 10E regarding fiscal year 2025, 26 pavement maintenance project.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Brownstone, members of the public. Delita Associate Engineer, tonight I'm going to be talking about everyone's favorite subject, pavement. I will try and be brief. I know it's late, thank you. So earlier this year, the city received our most recent assessment of our conditions of our roadways. And we use that to shape this year's paving project. We try to do an annual paving project every year. This one was helpful because we had such recent data from this study that looked at pavement conditions last year or last December, I should say. I'm going to give a quick summary of kind of the results of that assessment as well as kind of describing our project this year. And provide a little insight into what we have planned for next year. Before I get into that, I want to just introduce the concept of pavement condition index. So this is how we rate the condition of our streets. It's a nationally adopted standard. It came out of the Army Corps of Engineers in the seventies. It's helpful for quantifying the conditions of our roads. One thing I want to point out is that it's typical to compare this to like getting grades in school where you think, you know, an A plus is 100. With roadwork, it's actually a little bit of an adjustment to that. So we have what we call an optimal road condition, which we're targeting. And in Half Moon Bay, that would be a PCI of 85. So you'd consider an A or an A plus is an A 85. So in public works, we have a little bit of a sliding curve with grading here. So the, so we don't do this assessment ourselves. We have a partnership with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Every three years, they hire a consultant to come and assess the city's streets. This excludes the highways through Half Moon Bay. This is just local streets. It also excludes private streets. They drive each street, they look at the pavement condition, they mark deficiencies. They give that street an average and then they give us a total average for all of Half Moon Bay. So this assessment was done in December of 2024. We got results in April of this year. So our current PCI as of December was 64, which is down from 68 in 2020. So typically, you can expect about a two-point drop per year without doing improvements in your roadways. And that varies depending on weather and just every road condition. Obviously, we're putting money into our roads and doing pavement projects and pavement work as part of other projects. That's why you see kind of over the last five years, we see a four-point drop as opposed to a temper 10-point drop if we weren't doing anything. By comparison, the Bay Area average for PCI right now is 67. So we're kind of in the middle of the pack, a little bit on the low side of the middle of the pack. In San Mateo County, I think the average is closer to 70. So a little bit, a little bit higher, a higher bar, I guess. The assessment also, so the assessment goes through and looks at all of our streets and also develops a plan for projects to improve our PCI. And they look at different types of road treatment and quantify those numbers to get us back up to that target 85 optimal PCI. So if we had all the money in the world to spend on pavement, we can tackle what they refer to as our backlog. Which is just kind of those, all those projects that we would need to get up to 85. And that's, and by their estimates, the consultants' estimates, it's around $10 million. You see a little asterisk there, that's because that's a very optimistic number. They're looking at pavement work kind of on its own, and this is a Bay Area average. Our costs are notably higher on the coast here. We don't have a pavement plant here. It's over in Redwood City. So there's larger transportation costs. This also doesn't factor in things like striping or traffic control or stormwater management. All these other little things that are going to add and accumulate to the cost of the project. That's also work if we were going to do that work this year, as I mentioned, because the PCI drops every year. If this is stretched out over five years, which is what the plan calls for. Those costs will also grow because we're continually fighting our degrading PCI as part of that effort. So over a five-year period, that 10 million grows to 15 million. And this is covered in the assessment report. The last piece of the assessment report is they developed this plan and they developed different scenarios for how we can fix our streets. And they look at a fixed dollar amount to be applied for each scenario. So there's a scenario based on our average that we've been spending on roads. A scenario based on what it would take to maintain our current PCI. And then a scenario to increase our PCI five points over the next five years. And then they pick out individual roads for different treatments in order to achieve those goals. Now, when they do this, they do it in a way that optimizes the total score. It's a numbers game. And unfortunately, what that means is that, you know, a lot of people who look at their street and say, my street's in bad condition. Those streets are going to be less likely to be on the list of recommended streets for treatment. There's three categories of treatment. We have maintenance at the top, which is for streets in the best condition. There's rehabilitation, which is kind of streets at the midpoint. And then there's reconstruction, which is kind of the streets like beyond the point of no return in a way. And I don't mean that to say that we don't, we don't care about those streets. But you don't see streets with reconstruction within the recommendations from AMS, the consultant who did the assessment. Because the cost of reconstruction, the cost for each stage goes up exponentially over, just because of the additional work. And so with reconstruction of one street, you're going to spend a lot more money than you would to do maintenance maintenance on streets that are in better condition. So what does, what do these treatments look like? So maintenance typically is referring to cracks sealing, slurry sealing of streets. This, one thing that's not shown here is we'll do digouts. If there's portions, if the street is generally in good condition, but there's a couple of patches where there's been some settlement over, say, a utility trench or a monument well. You dig that out and compact it, restore it back and then finish your slurry seal. So you're getting close to a brand new street. This is the best way to spend money on street maintenance, but there are other restrictions to it. There's, right now where we're at in the season, we're getting closer into the winter season where slurry seal is not going to be as effective here. If the ground gets, because you're looking at a thinner pavement layer, when the ground is colder, it's a little bit cooler out. You don't get as good of application with it. So although there is a lot of slurry seal and crack sealing called out in the study over the next two years. We've actually decided to push all the slurry seal to next year's project. This year's project, we are going to pursue a strictly rehabilitation project. And this is a little bit more intensive for pavement work. This is, you know, there's a milling component, which typically includes removal of kind of the weaker top of the asphalt. And then a new overlay of asphalt going over the top of it with varying thickness recommendations. At the end of a, of an overlay like this, you end up with roughly a brand new street. Because you have the ability to control kind of the profile and fill out all the low spots as part of that work. But it is more expensive. So slurry seal, right now, we're looking at, we're looking at our costs roughly around $2 a square foot for slurry seal. By comparison, our cold planting and overlay is around $5 a square foot. So with this year's project that we have planned for right now, and we included drawings as an attachment, or I think it's our 90% set. It's focused in Delita Park. It's roughly 200,000 square feet of paved area over eight streets. These are all streets that were recognized in the AMS study in the first two years of kind of recommended improvements. We selected these streets because it's a high-density neighborhood. It has a lot of traffic, a lot of people getting to the beach, a lot of school traffic as well. And gives us an ability to cluster the work around a smaller, kind of tighter area. Which, given the season and where we're at, it'll help us to mobilize a project faster, reduce the construction schedule. And just ensure that we get it done in a timely manner. This year's project is going to be funded through two primary sources. There's Senate Bill 1 or SB 1, which is our state-funded gas tax. We get an annual allocation this year, last year's allocation was 635,000. And then we also get funds through the San Mateo County Measure A and W, another kind of repeating annual fund around 740. So currently, we have a million dollars kind of allocated for this project with an estimated cost of construction around 965. Obviously, 1.4 million is a bit more. So those additional funds that wouldn't go to this, these funds go, and both of these pots are strictly for road projects, for street projects. What we don't use from this year can go to other projects. They can go to cost overruns from projects like what we, we use some of these funds on Poplar Street. We use it for some of our own staff doing like cold patch repairs. Since we don't have, we can't do hot mix asphalt within our staff, we don't have the equipment for it. It can also be used as matching funds for grant applications on street projects, such as Highway 1 North, which you'll be hearing about in a couple of weeks. And the funds we don't use roll over into next year's and we have an account that kind of accrues with those unused funds. Next year's project I mentioned is going to be primarily a maintenance project. So that's fundamentally digouts, crack sealing, and slurry seal. By pushing this work off to next year, we have more, well, for one, we're focused on doing this work kind of in midsummer of next year. When the weather is going to be a little bit warmer. This also gives us time to plan this out a little bit better. So this is a kind of a working draft of the streets we have allocated. This is based on that $2 a square foot, which factors in an assumption for things like digouts. Which we don't know really what the extent of digouts are at this point. That's a major contribution to the overall cost. One of the benefits of giving us the time to work through this through next year is that we can also coordinate with our local utility companies. Some of which have been cooperative in helping to help fund some of the repair work. If it's, if there's a district, a utility district where there's been significant settlement over one of their utilities. We can reach out to them and try to get some cost recovery from them. So that helps us to plan this project a little bit more efficiently. And as we, as we further expand next year's project and will, we're optimistic that the estimated cost is going to go down as we kind of flesh it out and we'll be able to expand and add additional streets. Just for comparison, what it would take to do a reconstruction project. So obviously Belleville is a highly neglected street. We haven't done, I've heard people say we haven't done pavement work on Belleville in 20 years or something. But this is what a million dollar project would look like. It's, it would be one project to reconstruct Belleville, which currently has a PCI of 19. Now, that would bump the PCI Belleville up to 100. But if we move forward with just one project like this, we would still see a net drop in our own PCI by not doing other work. So the whole program is set focused on the numbers. And that doesn't mean we can't move forward with. we can't move forward with other projects or, or, or address, you know, streets that really need, that, that really need that, but we, we start with kind of our focus on the PCI.
I just have to say, though, that Belleville has been in that condition for, for years. Something's got to be done there. It's just not acceptable to continue that way. I don't know what we do about it, but it needs to be done. Just, it's been years, literally, maybe a decade.
I hear you. So we, we have limited funds for this program. We're, at the staff level, we're trying to do things that we can to, to stretch our funds out and be, be smart about the work that we're doing. Obviously, there's not a whole lot of grant opportunities around pavement management, but they do come up. There was actually one recently that was sponsored by CalRecycle for using rubberized slurry seal, I think it was, and we didn't, we weren't doing enough work to qualify for that, and it wasn't, it wasn't the right grant for either of these two projects. But we're kind of, we're, we're exploring those options and continuing to see what we can find. Another thing that's been a huge help for us is our GIS program that, that we implemented last year. We can leverage that and we could actually pull layers from our assessment study as well as our pavement projects and incorporate that into our GIS. That helps us a lot if we're going to coordinate with private development. Though, the worst thing you can see is a brand-new paved street getting a, a fresh trench cut through it from some utility lateral. And in fact, even with this year's project, I was going through and assessing it and found there's, there's at least one private development project that's not in construction yet, it's still in permitting, but we would expect they're going to have building permits, you know, in three months, probably right after we finish this project this year, and, and if they're, first, one of the first things they're going to want to do is cut new trenches. Fortunately, where that project is located, we can, it's, it's right at the end of one of the streets where we're planning to do work on, and, and it's also close to our Second Avenue Hatch Connection Project, which we're going to be moving forward with next year. So we can pull some scope out of this year's paving project, it's like a hundred feet of paving, and add that to that project next year to avoid a, a situation where we, we pave a street, then somebody's looking to cut utilities into it. Another option that we have, which we haven't historically done in Hafn Bay, is, is put in place an encroachment moratorium. And what that means is, once we finish the stretch of street, we say, okay, this is under moratorium now, no more encroachment permits for a year or for two years. This year's project is actually a good candidate for that, based on projects that are in, in building permit stages or in construction today. It's something that we wanted to present to council for your input, and yeah, that's all I have. So tonight's resolution is actually to allow us to move forward with putting this year, finishing plans for this year's project, which we're doing in-house, and, and putting it out for bid, which we'd hope to do at the end of the week. But I'm here to answer questions and happy to hear any other feedback. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for a very thorough, comprehensive report. You got through a lot of material. I think it really helps the public hopefully understand more how you're, the whole decision-making process around paving, because everyone sees their own streets, you know, like, well, yeah, you haven't done this one in ten years, but each decision then pulls potential funding from preventative action, you know, because something has been let go for a long time. So it's kind of, it's tough. I mean, I don't envy trying to make those decisions, but it really helps the community understand where the balancing act is and, and, and the different levels of mediation that can happen for roads and why. And then, of course, what happens when someone all of a sudden starts cutting right into it. So I really appreciate that. Just curious, we don't have any comments?
Mayor? I do have one comment for the, just the record in terms of an issue that we often consider as proximity to council members' residences, to ensure there's no conflict of interest, and this question did come up. And so I just wanted to confirm that there is an exception under the conflict of interest rules for maintenance projects. So I, we did not do an in-depth evaluation of where the projects are with respect to council members' residences, because the whole project falls under the exception for maintenance work.
Thank you.
But I thought I heard you say that only the projects next year were maintenance, that the ones in the coming year were not maintenance.
I think the term maintenance is being used differently here. So the, yep.
Well, I'm happy to clarify, the, the idea in the conflict of interest rules is that you're not building a new project, you're repairing or maintaining something that's existing.
Which, by the way, they stopped short of my house. There is Aaron Valdez and I see the little white dash. I have a spray paint can, I was not going to do that, but I, I saw that. But I, it, it's the most bang for your buck is what you're trying to do, and you're trying to save the streets you have. But I agree, the streets that, that are in drastic need of reconstruction, we have to figure out a way to start addressing them. We can't just totally ignore them. And I, I don't know the answer to that yet, because we, we know, but maybe some years you can do part of it now and then, you know, we, incremental. And sometimes maybe folks would help, you know. Belleville's an interesting street, I remember that one twenty years ago, on some of the, you know, trying to establish flow lines, trying to, you know, with the drainage out there and, and paving. But I think, you know, you try to keep the streets you have intact, and then the ones that have already gone, you got to figure out, you know, I, I think incremental, if you could do that. And then you also asked if you wanted to input about moratorium, you were asking for that tonight?
If you have any, that would be great, but if not, that's fine too. So this year's project, you're, you're going to see it at least two more times. Once this goes out to bid, assuming it moves forward tonight, it'll, it'll, it'll go out to bid, so there will be one additional time to kind of look at this year's project to, to award a contract. And then when that project is completed, we will also have a notice of completion. So either of those would also be at times to further discuss potential moratorium. And if, if you have input on additional information that you'd like, or to put, put a draft together of what that would look like, I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to work on that.
Okay.
Just one thought. So I see that Wave Avenue is on there for next year, and Maz and I received an email from a, a resident on, on Wave about speeding on, on Wave. And they've also, this person and some of their neighbors had talked previously about getting some, you know, traffic calming. Maybe if we're paving the street, you know, maybe they might pay themselves for, you know, some, I guess they're not speed bumps anymore, they're like speed tables? Yeah. Maybe they would, you know, pitch in and, and pay for those at the same time that you're doing their street, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's always helpful to mobilize, kind of, if you're already doing work in an area. So that would be, that would be a, a great idea, if that's something that lines up with work next year.
I think we have one public comment.
Sorry, not public comment. Councilmember Penrose would like to speak.
Yeah.
Can you clarify something for me? I'm a little bit confused. We are choosing streets based on our ability to get a higher PCI. That's one of the criterion we're using, right?
That's correct.
And by using that criterion, criteria, are we not taking care of streets like Belleville? You know, how do, how do we get a decent PCI? And we, you know, I'm all for having a good PCI. I guess that's important. I don't know exactly why it's important, but it is an indicator of how we're taking care of our streets. Can you talk about that a little bit, Maz, and just, just let me know what, what your thinking is on it?
Absolutely. So PCI is important. I know it's, it's a ranking system, it's something that it, it basically establishes protocols and, and a rating that's, that's uniform. Those, PCI is also utilized towards additional grant funding. So if you have a really low PCI, it does impact your ability to get your gas tech funds as well as other funding sources for this type of work. So that, I think that is important. I think the component we got, we have to consider is, long-term, we need to do our pavement maintenance and rehabilitation work, but also look at potentially focusing on some reconstruction as well. Because we do have a backlog of, of streets that are beyond any, you know, cold mill, mill and fill and slurry work. So I think long-term, you're really looking at it from twofold. You do want to, you do want, you don't want your PCI to drop too low where you're concerned with losing funds. That would be a very awful situation. But you also don't want to neglect streets that need significant funding, investment. And so how we balance that, I think that's an important component. As we move forward with this program and, and into next year's planning for our capital program, I think we're going to look at doing some additional rehabilitation work and reconstruction work. One of the things that we were considering internally was to take a closer look at Belleville specifically, because it's been on the list for so long, as well as the fact that it's, it's one of the worst streets in our, in our, in our assets. So we can look at the drainage concerns and do some in-house design and at least get ourselves prepped. We have a cost estimate, we know approximately how long it's going to, how much it's going to take to do that street. So that gives us a starting point. So as we come forward next year and we program our capital projects, this will be one of the, the, the streets that we would be, be listing. And I think we're going to look at doing a combination. It, because as Dale mentioned, if we, it's, it's really, it's unfortunate the way the system scoring works, but this is the way that it works. If you work on this street for a million dollars, it's, it actually, you're still going to get a lower PCI than you would by doing the other streets. And it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's just the way this, this system is set up. And so the best approach is, take care of your rehab, make sure those, the streets that are in better condition don't become as bad as these other streets, but also find a, find a funding opportunity and a program to really take care of the reconstruction as well.
What about a complete streets grant like Poplar, but for Belleville?
We can certainly look at those as well. I mean, there's a, there's active transportation program, a funding that'll be available, I think, in the next year or two.
Sure.
And so there's, there's always going to be opportunities for that, we can certainly look at that. With, with, the reason why Poplar was highly rated and ranked for grant opportunities was its nature of being a more of a collector's street. The issue that Belleville, this example of Belleville will have is that it's a local residential roadway. It, it just makes it more, it doesn't mean that it's impossible, it just doesn't rank as high as some of the other ones.
I was being facetious largely, yeah.
Sorry, the engineer took it literally.
Thanks, Maz. We have, we have one public comment. Okay, let's go on to public comment.
Okay, Sid, go ahead.
The older I get, the more I get depressed when I hear that you're raiding streets by some kind of details and numbers, but I have a friend who's even older than me, and her son, Cameron Palmer, contributes a whole lot to this community, and I would just hate to think that she's living on that street year after year on Bellevue, Belleville, without any hopes of it ever being paved to a decent condition. So maybe think of the community and who contributes around here, not just about the stats and numbers and how you can get your ratings up. I mean, you're pouring all kinds of money into other programs that aren't paying off, so why not pour a little money towards Bellevue? Thank you. And I hope she doesn't outlive it.
Thank you.
I think, I think the Belleville thing is something we should put on the priority at some point and have a plan, so I don't want to go into that because it's late tonight, but that's been going on for years down here, it has been. And I've been, I've been here, for twenty years, I've been hearing it, Bello coming up here. So I think that needs to go to priorities at some point. And then I wanted to say thank you, Dale, for Friday, because you walked me through all this and all the questions like Penrose had. You gave me that, you gave me insight, so it was, and he already knows this, Paul already knows this stuff. So I thought it was really good, so I want to say thank you for that. I did bring up that Frontage Road, our street, is just beat up, but there's no cold patching. Can we do something temporary? Because as you leave there and you're going to exit to one, then you're hitting three potholes. But we're going to be doing that construction there. Frontage Road is going to be redone, then Highway One, that's going to be starting at some point, I'm assuming.
Well, I'll just point out, Frontage Road, for those that don't know, it's, it borders the Castle Del Mar neighborhood adjacent to Highway One. It's actually within Caltrans right-of-way, and they're the ones that maintain that road. But I believe, as you mentioned, that's part of the Shaw project, is that correct?
The multi-asset project does have, are the Class Ones throughout the Hafn Bay jurisdictional boundaries as well as the Frontage Road. That, that's all going to be repaved as part of that project. There's going to be a pre-construction meeting happening sometime this month, and I'll be back with more information as far as the schedule and, and impacts for that project. But yes, that'll be covered as part of that scope.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to advertise the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six pavement management project for construction.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Naggingdoss?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. We're on to item ten F, asset disposition policy. Got a staff report on that? Or should we just jump to motion?
I think we can provide a pretty abbreviated staff report, just so that the context is out there.
So yeah, just to be very brief, we have a municipal code that does outline our, our limits as to what can be disposed of by city, or city manager and staff versus what we bring to you, the council. All items, even if it's under a thousand dollars, still has to be brought to you, just as a matter of disclosure, as well as obviously if it is over a thousand dollars, and then we at that point get your direction on that. Unfortunately, the municipal code is very brief and abbreviated and doesn't provide a lot of guidelines and outline as to how staff should proceed with different types of assets, whether it be land, whether it be computers, you know, furniture, you name it. And so the policy that we bring forth to you tonight really provides that framework and, and gives staff some guidelines so that they're proceeding in line with how most cities and jurisdictions are, you know, should be handling disposition of assets. And, and just kind of, and really just unifies it to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the public as well as the city. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I, I will jump to what other cities are doing. Generally speaking, our limits are a bit on the low side for city manager authority. And so we did want to bring up that a lot of cities do have a slightly higher limit at around a ten thousand dollar limit for general disposition, with some cities and jurisdictions having special limits for specific types of assets.
And we're not, we're not looking for making any changes, that would actually require a change to the ordinance code. So we just want to put that out there for future discussion, if we want to explore that down the road.
It was just something we noticed as we were developing, that it is, you know, it's just a little bit on the lower side, but that's all.
What are we going to do with that old truck that you guys got rid of? What are we gonna do with that old truck that you guys got rid of?
It's a good question. We'll, we'll figure that out. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it has value, and you should probably make some money off it, now that it's got, it has to have low miles. It's got a little bit of rust.
Yeah, like, we're, we're referring to the, the rec department ranger that will be replaced by the van soon. Um, in talking with, um, Todd Sealy, our public works superintendent, who has managed fleets other places, the, probably the best-case scenario is to use an auction house, although we've also talked about maybe first seeing if there's any interest locally here, you know, it might, it's, it's a functional truck, it's just not really good for city staff. So this, this policy would help guide some of those decisions, um, down the road. I'm sorry?
No action required?
Um, the, the action required tonight would just be to adopt the policy. Yep.
I move that we adopt the policy.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Um, any commission committee, any commission committee updates?
I, I'll just mention that the Rec, Recreation Commission met last week. It was their first meeting in several months. We've had challenges getting a quorum, uh, but we had a pretty full house last week and really good conversations on Carter Park and its future, and then on their priorities, um, for, um, the, the commission and the work that the rec does. So, uh, good productive meeting, and, uh, our next meeting is on September 24th.
Great, thank you.
I may, through the city manager, so mentioned that we have a, our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee coming up on Thursday. Anybody's interested, the Thursday of this week, um, at the South Day Room, we'll be talking about a few items, um, e-bike safety will be one of them.
Great, thanks. Any, um, future discussion agenda items? No, any city council reports? No. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.